Study session incorporating the roll call from that meeting. And my reports would be that over the weekend, or the last two weekends, thank you for coming, the last two weekends, we had different counselors going to roll calls. And because of the fires and whatnot, we certainly heard some heroic and some scary situations that our firefighters and police officers were involved in. So our hearts go out to the cities involved with that fire and all of the citizens. Last report, I hadn't heard if they heard the or found the two people that are missing. So along with that, Metro Mayor's Caucus had a phone call during all of this. And we're wondering if cities would like to donate to the fund that goes directly to the people involved. So I, all of us have to come back to our councils to ask for that. So I'm asking that that agenda item be put on Monday's agenda, please. And my recommendation would be $10,000. And we'll have that discussion next week. Another thing that, it doesn't have to be next week, but another thing, so I don't lose track of it, that I'd like to see on a agenda would be to codify the graffiti ordinance that we had. Just graffiti is going wild in this city. It's looking very ugly and we need to get it back under control. We had such great citizen help with walkers walking in the morning and sharing where the tags were and people at night, and we even had people volunteering and taking care of the graffiti. So it was gone within less than 12 hours, let alone 24. And that has gone by the wayside. So I am feeling the need to get that back on track. The other thing I'd love for us to talk about is adding pre-meeting back to council meeting agendas. I just think that would help with the flow of the meeting if we had that from 6:30 to 7:00. So our questions could be asked and answered and it'd just help with the flow of the meeting. I would like for that back. So those are my only requests. Any other city counselors? Counselor Seymour?
Thank you, Mayor. As the mayor mentioned, several were able to attend police roll calls Thursday and Friday. I've got my days right. Friday and Saturday. That's right. And it was nice to have that opportunity. But along with that too, with our, with our fire department, it's just not as convenient in keeping the lockdown on the stations. But we absolutely appreciate the work that both fire and PD did in their assistance to our neighbors to the west. Everyone's seen the pictures out of there and it's terrible. And we absolutely appreciate that people were called in off shift to assist. And that way, we were able to lend a great deal of assistance in Superior and Louisville and then still be able to have the coverage that we needed here in our city. So our thanks go out to those who doubled up on shifts or even more than that. So thank you to the men and women of our fire and police.
Whoops, Mayor Protamdum up.
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me. I also attended a handful of roll calls between Christmas and New Year's. And thanks to police, fire, and as well as our utility workers that I know work hard through the holiday when a lot of us are getting to enjoy our family. I always appreciate going to visit those, the police roll calls. They're always very grateful that we show up because they know we're doing the same thing they're doing, taking time away from our family. But I think in our position, it, it's worth it to go tell them how much we appreciate them. But like the mayor, I do think that a couple of things that I wanted to share with the group and Mr. Andrews, one, I'm fully supportive of us looking at the graffiti in codifying what was done in the past so that we can help maintain the look of our city for our residents and the property. And the other thing that I would like to figure out how we do as a council is start to advocate to the sheriffs about them actually holding people for things when we arrest them. I certainly have heard complaints from residents when they hear about, you know, people who are repeat offenders that are out and getting in accidents or stealing cars or whatever it is. And I know through COVID, things have changed as far as some of this sprung out of COVID and what they were holding people for in some of its budget, depending on which county you're in. But I would certainly welcome the opportunity to have both sheriffs come talk to us and then be able to advocate that they do really what we're paying them to do and actually hold people in jail when, when it's appropriate. I think it's unfortunate that oftentimes I've heard residents ask about what job our police are doing and really they're trying to do their job and they'd love to do their job, but it's hard when you arrest somebody and then they get kicked loose. And obviously, we want that to be, make sense, but we, you know, I, again, would just advocate that we have an opportunity to have them come speak to us sooner rather than later. The other thing that I wanted to bring up again is it's amazing to see in such time of bad incidents such as the fire that we saw and such great loss, it's truly heartbreaking on how both our community and other communities in the metro area have stepped up to help our neighbors to the north. But it also brings some future things. And I had sent some, an email to city manager's office and the rest of the council saying I'd like to talk about what learnings we have in the next couple of months as far as how that fire spread and making sure that we're maintaining our open space in a way that, you know, we don't see that kind of thing ever happen in our city because it certainly was knocking at our door at one point. So I'd like to see if we can't have a conversation as a council about that. So those are my notes and I think I saw Counselor Smith raise her hand, just in case you missed her.
I did miss her. Counselor Smith?
Yes, thank you. I hope everyone had a nice holiday and a very happy new year. Thank you to our emergency personnel, to our fire and to our police. I had an opportunity to attend some of those roll calls before being exposed to COVID and in isolation here. So that's the reason why I am here on my last day of exposure. So I just wanted to thank our community for rallying around and doing as much as they can for those affected by the fires. And just wanted to remind folks that this week is free fitness week at our recreation centers around the city. So if you have an opportunity to check those out, please do so through January 7th. And then if you would like one more opportunity to experience our holiday lights, they will be up through Friday, Friday, January 8th. And that's all I have. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Counselor Izadi?
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to echo the thanks that we've all been giving to Westminster Fire, Westminster Police, and special thanks to City Manager Andrews and Deputy Manager Door. They really kept us updated extraordinarily well, I would say. It was really comforting to know that we had an entire group of people within the city who meets, right? So they talk through what's happening, they talk through how to respond, and they give us updates. So that was really helpful. The stories we've been hearing are heartbreaking, they're nonstop. Most folks in Westminster know someone or know of someone who has been impacted by these fires and I'm just so grateful that all of us up here and the city staff and the organizations who are out there, the churches, the various rapid response groups, the police, the fire, everyone is pulling together. And it, it really does bring me hope and I hope it brings all of you hope that we can work together to get through anything. It almost touched us in the city. We got lucky and we should be grateful that we were not impacted. With that said, the primary need is money, right? So from what, what we've all heard from the Boulder OEM, if you are a Westminster resident and you are looking to help those who are impacted, there's a donation website, the Boulder OEM website that you can find, you can Google, or, or reach out to me and I can give you the link, that you can donate directly. They're looking for gift cards as well. The organizations who are collecting items are overloaded with physical items. So that's not what they need right now, they need money. So if you're looking to do that, that's out there. To do my part, I formed, I formed a group, so a rapid response group, if you will, of three volunteers with myself and we're calling businesses, the large businesses within the city, to see if they can make sizable donations to Boulder OEM to really help those in need. So if you can do your part, please do, folks are in need and home, you know, homeless basically waiting for assistance. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
The other thing was one of our churches, Calvary over on 100th and Wadsworth, they were emailing me as I'm talking with the city manager and deputy city manager Door. It was nonstop, phone was either going, computer was going with emails and doing two things at once. I finally told them, we're not opening anything, just ask forgiveness afterwards. And they had 200 people show up for that night and they fed them that night. They also let them sleep there and they fed them breakfast the next morning. So big shout out for, for them that just said, nope, we gotta do something. So I know those 200 people at least appreciated having some place to be and people to be with. Anything else? City Manager Andrews?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a few comments tonight, if I could. First, I echo the sentiments expressed regarding the devastating fires and significant loss experienced by so many of our neighbors to the north. The city of Westminster, of course, stands ready to assist in any way we can. The Westminster Fire Department and Police Department, as already mentioned, lent aid on Thursday and into the weekend, including providing firefighting support for fire attack and structure protection. That was in Superior primarily, aiding in the transport of hospital patients, notifying residents needing to evacuate and providing site security. So a significant role for our first responders this weekend throughout this crisis and we really want to thank them and all of the people who supported them in their work. And they are tired this week and I want to acknowledge that and appreciate how much they really lent to combating this fire. On Friday morning, staff began coordination with Team Rubicon, a disaster relief organization connected with the Red Cross and the Boulder Office of Emergency Management. Counselor Izadi made this referral for us, thank you. The city offered the use of facility space for storage and as a collection center. Staff also made connections with a private business owner who generously offered additional building space. At this time, the organization's immediate needs were met in Lafayette and Team Rubicon expressed appreciation for Westminster's proactive offer of support. Many people have been asking how they can help. As mentioned earlier, at this point, money is probably the most useful tool. Information is available on the city homepage, cityofwestminster.us regarding how best to support victims of the fires and help them with their needs. And at this time, we're told that all human and animal feeding and sheltering needs have been met and there's no current need for any material donations, which is the need shifting now towards cash. This may change in coming weeks and we'll, we'll keep everybody up to date on our website. Officials do ask that people stay away from the disaster area at this time and when appropriate, donate only things requested and through officially designated collection centers. Staff will update the website and communicate through city channels when information on designated collection centers becomes available. And I would make a final note, Mayor, if you wouldn't mind, that Colorado has been seeing a significant increase in COVID cases in the past 10 days. Our COVID testing location at the Front Range Community Center has seen a significant increase in visits and wait times. And we thank all of our residents who've been patient, waiting in those significant lineups. And that's the case across the region, actually, with, with wait times at, at testing centers. And due to the impact of the Omicron variant, the city is experiencing staffing shortages that may impact service delivery, including levels of service for snow removal. I know we are now below bare minimum staffing levels and we're working very hard, but there are quarantine periods that overlap now and, and we're finding it challenging to get fully staffed. Staff is evaluating current policies and practices to reduce transmission among staff and in city facilities. And we encourage the community to be vigilant in protecting themselves and their families by following the health orders and the guidance moving forward. And that's all I have on my comments, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. And you reminded me, we have one other group I heard from Superintendent Swanson from District 50, or Westminster Public Schools. And she sent me the letter that went out and starting today, they're collecting money and gift cards over at Landgraph Plumbing at 73rd and Bradburn. They have teachers, principals and other workers that lost everything. So that's how Westminster Public Schools is reaching out and trying to help their own and anybody in the city or any place listening that wants to help and drop off money or gift cards there. That's it. We will now move on to presentations and I would ask for council to indulge me and allow me to put the Governance Best Practices Training with Sam Light first and so he doesn't have to sit and wait. And so we welcome you.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protam, council staff, thank you very much for having me this evening. My name is Sam Light and I am General Counsel for SERSA, which stands for the Colorado Intergovernmental Risk Sharing Agency. We are the city's insurer for property casualty insurance coverage. Very proud to have the city as a member of SERSA. In fact, the city of Westminster was one of our charter members when SERSA was formed in 1982. We're very proud of that. We've been able to serve your needs for property and casualty insurance since that time. And also very proud that the president of our Board of Directors is on your staff, Marty Arxen, is the current president of our Board of Directors. For those, maybe a little bit of a, something you've heard before, but particularly for newer members of council, a little bit more about SERSA. So we're a public entity insurance pool. We're not a commercial insurance carrier. We're organized pursuant to Colorado statute. And our only insureds, our only book of business, as we call it, is Colorado Cities and Towns and affiliated entities. We're very proud of that, very proud of having the city in SERSA. So thank you very much for that. This evening, I'm going to do a presentation called Suggestions for Success in public office. There's a little bit longer title. It says Suggestions for Success and parentheses, it says, and reducing the risk of liability. But I've found over the years in doing my trainings that if we collectively, as a governing body and as members of that governing body, focus on those core principles that are best practices for success and how we do our job serving our community, then we find that by and large, the liability risks will take care of themselves. So that's why I put the focus on suggestions for success with the coincidental positive effect of reducing your, your liability risk. I believe you all got a copy of my presentation slides in your materials, along with one handout that I'll mention a little bit, a little bit later. We also at SERSA do a number of things for our members, including for elected officials in particular. We have a handbook called our Ethics, Liability and Best Practices Handbook for Elected Officials. I left hard copies at the dais this evening. So if you have not yet received a copy of this, we hope this is helpful to you. It's written particularly for elected officials and addresses a number of issues that we think are unique to your role. Dynamics on the governing body, dealing with social media risks, dealing with open meetings and transparency requirements, some of those things I'll touch on this evening. But I hope that's a helpful resource for you. Additionally, you can go to www.sersa.org and right across the ribbon at the top of the page, there's a dropdown menu called Education and Training. And on that dropdown menu is a page for elected official materials. We have everything there from articles to webinars, an electronic copy of this handbook and other resources for you. So I hope they, you find those helpful to you. Next slide, please. I hear, I understand there's something out there, something in the air that makes the slides change. So this evening, I'm going to touch briefly on the role of being a public official, kind of touch on some basics. We'll talk about the city's structure and how that affects liability risk at the organization and to you individually. We'll talk about transparency, the requirements that surround being on the governing body of a public entity are much different than the private sector. We'll talk very briefly about ethical obligations. Just want to touch on a couple of core concepts under your local ethics codes. And then we'll talk about due process requirements, which I understand you've got a fair amount of exposure to. I promised not to go as long in my presentation about due process as some of your more recent due process hearings. But as a reminder, we'll touch on some of the core concepts, why it's so important to have good fundamental commitment to providing due process on land use and other quasi judicial matters. I do need to make the disclosure caveat that though I am SERSA's attorney, this is not attorney client communication, I'm happy to take questions, want to make the training as useful to you as I can. So feel free to ask me any questions, but I do have a good radar for what I consider to be the live one. Sometimes I'll get a question and I'll say, well, yes, you know, Mr. Light, I've got a question. What if another council member or appointed official does this? And everyone's eyes perk up and I get the sense that that's the live burning issue of the day. If that's something for which you need legal advice in the here and now, then you want to rely on your city attorney's office. Same with staff support on other issues. I'm happy to give you some thoughts from SERSA's risk management perspective, but if you need legal advice on a pending legal issue, that's for the city attorney's office. I hope that my refresher on best practices will be helpful to you. Please feel free to ask questions as we go through. Next slide. Commitment one in best practices, commit to the role of being a public official. That may sound fairly basic, but no matter how long you've been an elected official, whether you're brand new, elected last November, or have a couple of terms under your belt at this point, I think it's always important to check in on that concept and remember that when you become a public official, your role and relationship to the community and to the organization changes dramatically. Right, you're no longer just a citizen of the city of Westminster, you're now a government official and that's a 24/7 job. Right? It's the 10 o'clock phone call sometimes, it's the bump into you at 7 o'clock at the supermarket, right? It's not that you're asked to give up your personal lives and please have those and enjoy those, but in the eyes of the community, as a member of the governing body, your citizens, your constituents will always perceive you to be a representative of this organization and a member of council, particularly when they're interacting with you about city business. They want to hear from you, no matter where you engage with them, they're looking at you as a representative of the city of Westminster. You're no longer just an outsider, the city government, you're now all the ultimate insiders. And it has meaning and effect for you legally, morally, ethically, because when you become a member of the governing body, there's a whole set, large number of ordinances and rules and policies and city council code of conduct and rules of procedure that now stick to us as insiders within the organization and that dictate the way we assert, approach certain issues and make certain decisions. I think you'll find, you know, sometimes that maybe those rules and policies aren't what you would like them to be, maybe they need some tweaking, but you have to follow the proper process to make those amendments as well. Additionally, whatever brought you to your elected office, right? You may have been a critic or proponent of a particular issue or maybe a smaller handful of issues that were particular to you, but now that you've been elected by the citizens, it's important to take that larger perspective, right? Make it a hallmark of your tenure to be a great representative. I love the word that you used in your code of conduct, I think it is. Commit yourself to being a great representative, a great ambassador, right? For the city with respect to all the issues that come in front of you as a council member. Next slide, please. Remember, whatever your role was with the city previously, you're now all its elected leaders, the guardians, the stewards, the fiduciary of this corporation, right? Municipalities or corporate entities incorporated at certain dates. And at that 40,000 foot level as the governing body, one of the highest charges you have is the protection of the city's interests and assets at that writ large level. And staying at that level, probably one of the paramount guiding principles for decision making is what's the right thing to do for the city as a city for the long haul, right? That may not be that easy sometimes, right? Sometimes emotions are running high, you've got a packed meeting room and you're getting all sorts of differing directions and inputs and thoughts about what's the best thing to do for the city. Recognize that as council members and as the governing body, I think one of your prerogatives is always, right? Take the time that you need and get the information that you require, right? And make a decision that you think will meet those principles. And that can come into play, you know, fairly often. Sometimes something seems new to you or it's just landing on your agenda for the first time. And maybe this room's crowded with people who during public comment want you to do something tonight, right? But if you're feeling as council members, hey, maybe there's more to this that we need to learn about, or maybe this isn't right, maybe we need to deliberate more, use that power and prerogative to your advantage in view of those higher principles of serving the best interest of the organization for the long haul. Next slide. Related to this, recognize that part of the job description, part of the role of the governing body and its members, particularly for elected and appointed officials, is delivering the product of good governance, which I've found over the years and from SERSA's risk management perspective, we think involves committing to a couple of core, really what I call civics principles, which I've listed on the left-hand side of this slide. And I think if you commit to those core principles and by and large, the corresponding risk issue will take care of itself. By that, I mean, for example, commit yourself to openness and transparency. And if you, you'll have few, if any, risks, claims, lawsuits over compliance with the open meetings law or the open records law. For example, do we understand that part of that commitment is that we know, right? As governing body members, that the emails that we send and receive wearing our hat as a council member, are by and large, public records open to public inspection. Right, there are some exceptions to that, some required types of communicate, some types of communications that we must keep confidential, but by and large, the correspondence of elected officials is a matter of public record. Commit yourself to fundamental fairness and you'll have few, if any, problems with due process claims. Commit yourself to being predictable and even-handed. You do have large book of ordinances and policies and resolutions. Commit yourself, particularly with people who are coming in front of you for requests involving their property rights, land use matters, rezonings or other things where you're being called upon to apply the city's existing standards, you want to do that in a predictable and even-handed manner. That'll protect you against equal protection claims or claims that the decision that you've made is somehow arbitrary and capricious because you weren't following your own rules. Finally, this last bullet item may not seem like much of a predictor of risk, but we think that it is. Commit yourself to mutuality of respect. Because what I, with yourself, fellow members of the governing body, with the citizens and staff, everyone who comes in front of you, because as I mentioned in my earlier example, it ain't easy, right? You're going to have those nights where it's going to be a packed meeting room and people are coming at you from all directions with suggestions on what you want to do. If that high emotion controversial matter is over and people go home, right? And they say to themselves, you know what? They may still disagree with the ultimate decision you made, they may say to themselves, I still disagree with what council decided, but you know what? I feel like I was heard, I feel like it was a fair process and I feel like I was respected in that process. Those kinds of reactions to your processes and your procedures, by and large, are not the folks who are going to be looking for ways to legally challenge, right? What you're doing. The flip side of that is if someone goes home from a contentious meeting or hearing and says, you know what? I feel like the decision was already made, I feel like there were some unusual things going on with the hearing procedures, I feel like there was bias or prejudice against my point of view or that what I had to say during the hearing was not heard. Those are the people who sometimes get mad enough to say, and you know what? I'm going to find a way to challenge this decision, right? And I think a core underpinning of all that is mutuality of respect. Next slide. Commitment number two in terms of best practices, commit yourself to supporting the city's structure. I hope for the newer members of council that your first question to the city attorney's office was not, can I get sued in this job? But the answer, of course, is yes, right? The good news is, just to give you a quick summary of the protections that you have as elected officials in Colorado, we do have a statute in Colorado that provides helpful protections. It says that the city, and by extension, the city's insurance company, SERSA, will defend you and pay judgments that are entered against you for acts or omission as a city council member. Good news. Right, there's a caveat to that. So long as, right, you're acting within the scope of your employment and not acting in a willful and wanted manner. So those are the two important points within that statute that need to be honored. Within the scope of employment may sound a bit odd from an elected official standpoint because you're not employees like staff, right? But that's the phrase that's within the statute. It simply means that everyone needs to understand and appreciate and stay within the particular set of authority that they have. And that's true for everyone in the organization, everyone from elected official to appointed official to staff, even volunteers, right? Have particular job duties, job descriptions. A particular job duties, job description, that's just inherent in municipal organizations where you as the governing body have already assigned certain functions, right? Or even your citizens have assigned certain functions by your charter to certain individuals or offices within the organization. Those delegations are there to protect you as well. The other odd phrase in the statute there is willful and wanton conduct, right? You're protected as long as you're not engaging in willful and wanton conduct. That's simply a phrase that to me means this and under the law means this. It's essentially conduct that intentionally undertaken, that's designed to injure someone's protected right, right? And is done with reckless disregard for their right. I have an even simpler way of describing it. I just call it bad stuff. And in our experience, the most significant risk exposure around that issue for elected and appointed officials is simply where an elected or appointed official misperceives that they have some governmental authority that they actually don't have, right? And wearing that cloak of misperceived governmental authority does the wrong thing for the wrong reason and injures some third party. And that's really what the risk it is. We know it when we see it. We're going to stay far away from it, but it's an important principle to understand because in addition to the protections of the statute falling away for willful and wanton conduct, you also can be at risk of losing your insurance coverage because public officials' liability coverage typically has exceptions for willful and wanton conduct. Okay? Next slide. Here's some more tips around these issues to help support the organizational structure within the city and avoid any concerns about role discipline. Again, understand the job description and stay within it. Recognize that those delegations of authority, whether they were by charter or ordinance, are there to serve you, right? Because either you or the citizens already made those delegations and they're there to protect you. From a claim perspective, it's helpful to us, right? If we have a particularly bad employment claim, for example, and the accusation comes in and says, someone says, well, I relied upon this or that promise from an elected or appointed official. It's helpful to us, assuming that didn't occur, to hold up the charter or hold up the ordinance and say, eh, that's not really something that you can reasonably rely upon because the organizational structure of this city or town is, and it's right here in black and white, right? Is that the elected or appointed officials actually aren't involved in those matters? And so it's unreasonable to try and build a claim along that as long as everyone's respecting those particular delegations. At the writ large level, think of your job as a group job, right? That elected officials primarily do their job by meeting together in this room and voting on matters that come in front of them as a group. And you have all sorts of additional protections when you're in this room, right? You've heard of them. You might have legislative immunity, quasi judicial immunity, legislative privilege, all things that are helpful from a defense perspective, right? In defending a claim and even intuitively, right? It can sound very odd, what if an aggrieved claimant comes up and says, well, I, I'm going to sue you and you only for that decision the council made last night? That just intuitively sounds incorrect, right? Because it's the group acting as a group that's made that decision. So there are protections for you there. So in that regard, you want to think in terms of we as a council and not I thinking in terms of I, particularly with respect to wanting to exercise some authority. Want to make sure you have that authority and if you don't, you want to stop and make sure that you're in a safe spot. Not so much related to liability risk, but another best practice for governing bodies and appointed bodies is this. I noticed that you gave reports a little while ago. Once in a while, maybe something comes up that seems a little off at reports, maybe someone says, mayor, yes, I have a report and the report is, in between our meetings and since our last meeting, I did this. If the reaction of everyone else at the diocese is, you did what? Right? Not necessarily a third party liability risk, right? But probably a point in time where the governing body and its wisdom, right? Wants to check in on what's our norms of conduct and our expectation, right? Around how we individually represent the body or do things outside of the meetings on behalf of the group. And if you put some affirmative attention to those issues, I think it serves you well and helps strengthen the council. Okay? Next slide. Recognize, right? And particularly in that service of the idea of thinking of we, not I, that at the end of the day, what matters is the voice of the council as a council in terms of organizational structure, right? Staff may be more comforted if you come to a decision by a 7-0 vote, but however you get there, whether it's 4-3, 7-0, commit yourselves in the service of the voice of the council. That commitment, right? Sometimes requires us to do some things that require a bit of humility, right? We may individually have a legislative priority that we would like to really see get done, but if we don't have three council members that can come along with us, right? Then we, the, the job requires that we set aside that personal item until there is support for it. It also requires that we accept that the council has spoken, even though we may have preferred a different outcome. And this last bullet on this slide is recognized in your code of conduct under protocol number three. Recognize sometimes that part of the job is, you know, having your own antenna up in dealing with constituents or citizens to recognize where you may be putting yourself and the organization at risk in terms of predicting outcomes, right? Or making a promise can kind of creep up on you, right? But you know how it happens. Maybe talking to a citizen and you're getting this vibe of like, hmm, they're reading, I think they're reading a lot into what I'm saying here. And they might just say, okay, thanks. And then they'll just go out and do it, right? So that's the point where you want to protect yourself and the organization by reminding them, no, that's a council decision or no, you need to go talk to the manager and they'll tell you what the city process is. But in their exuberance, sometimes people will approach you and put, you know, you know, it's nice to be in that position of power, but they may put more stock, right? Than we want them to in things that you tell them. So be careful and protect yourself in that regard. Finally, on this suggestion, next slide, please. Recognize that adherence to organizational structure is particularly important in the area of employee relationships. Check out section 4.10 of your charter. That sets up the relationship between the governing body and the administrative service of the city. And basically reminds us that as the governing body, right? You are not employee supervisors except for I think three direct reports, which are the city manager, the city attorney, and the judge. And so by your charter, you as a city have already delegated or assigned to the city manager responsibility for administrative service at the other levels of the organization. Or your direct reports, commit yourself to a good supervisory relationship, have good systems for reviewing performance or checking in. But other than that, you don't want to become inappropriately involved in personnel matters at other levels within the organization. That doesn't mean there's not accountability, right? But the accountability is with the city manager. If you hear from a constituent, a complaint about an employee other than your direct report, have a good protocol for checking in if you have a question about that. Who's our point of accountability? Who's our point of inquiry for that? The city manager, right? Okay. Next slide. Number three, commit yourself to transparency. That's not the legal term of art, right? That's, that's just the buzzword, transparency. Whatever it looks like to you as a city, consistent with whatever resources you want to apply to that concept, your citizens will appreciate and applaud your efforts towards transparency. They may not always be packing this room to applaud that, but if you have good commitment to transparency, it's probably because, just as I was able to do today, I can go to your website, check in on what council's up to, find the agendas, find the meeting videos, all those things. Believe me, foster great trust with the citizens when they have easy access to information about the goings on of the governing body. I'm sure the city attorney's office touched base with all of you, but whether you're brand new to council or been on for a while, I just wanted to touch base on the openness requirement of the open meetings law, right? As a reminder, the open meetings law says, whenever three or more members of council meet to discuss public business, that's a meeting that has to be open to the public. Simply means a citizen has a right to observe that discussion. If a fourth member's going to attend or you're going to take some kind of action and you have to do the things that you've done, like for tonight's meeting, publish and post and agenda and notice and so on, okay? That all is easy peasy. Meeting is gathering to discuss public business has to be open to the requirement, has to be open to the public. There are some nuances there. Under the statute, a meeting is any kind of gathering in person. We're kind of doing a bunch of them here tonight. We're doing in-person electronically, right? Or by phone. This all triggered the openness requirement of the open meetings law. We've always had lurking around these issues for many decades, the question of, well, ever since the email was invented, right? Back in 1996, the Colorado legislature adopted a statute to make it clear that the openness requirement of the stat, of the law was triggered by the use of electronic communications. They really meant email. Well, we had some questions lurking around, does that mean every piece of correspondence triggers the openness requirement? If there's three or more council members on that email thread? The state legislature, next slide, please. And I've noted on this slide, the state legislature finally in 2021 kind of jumped in and confirmed what some of the judicial opinions had already said, that if the email, even if there's three or more council members on the email, if it only relates to some very routine administrative matters, it won't trigger the openness requirement because they won't be considered meeting. But that's a very narrow set of things. That's emails, for example, where the manager is making an inquiry about availability and scheduling. Or an email where you're just copying your fellow council members on an FYI, or maybe you're copying them on a response to a constituent, or maybe you're posing a question or discussion at a later meeting in this room, right? The legislature in the bill passed this year confirmed that those types of situations of three that I just specifically mentioned, don't trigger the meeting requirement, right? But the other thing the bill did was emphasize that any discussion of the merits or substance, which they nicely told us meant the essence, right? Of a matter of public policy, any of those types of discussions where there are three or more members participating, that it needs to be an open meeting open to the public. Okay? Last thought on transparency. So who's active on social media? Okay. I don't have a lot of answers around the social media issue. There is a new chapter in our handbook with sharing a lot of questions that you might have about social media, but just want you to recognize there are risks around that issue from all different angles. There are First Amendment questions that arise as to whether or not, if you're using your social media to do your job as a government official, the case law that has developed to date basically says that it walks and talks like a government website and you're using it for governmental purposes and there'll be some First Amendment protections around that, even for the snarkiest of threads that appear in the comments. So check out that chapter about that issue. I do know there are other social media risks coming in other direction as well. I know elected officials sometimes can be the subject of a doxing effort, right? Where they can be on the receiving end of a true threat by social media. So just think about what your systems and protocols are for that. If it's a true threat, it probably violates some other criminal statutes. And so really for a true threat by social media, that's where you want to engage law enforcement in that regard. Okay? On this page, I provided a couple of links for some more reading material around those Next slide. Suggestion number four, commit yourself to ethical conduct. That could be a session in and of itself. I just want to touch base on a couple of things in your charter and your codebook about these issues. You know, ethics scandals, we don't see them all that often. They're kind of exciting to read about when they don't involve us, right? And as a municipal attorney and insurer of municipalities, they're kind of fun and exciting for me to read about when they happen like at the state legislative level or something like that, or somewhere out of state. But whatever it looks like to you, remember that when you became an elected official, you became subject to a code of ethics, which might be an amalgam of various state laws and charter provisions and ordinances. But you want to become familiar with those. And it may sound odd, but I suggest make your code of ethics, right? Whatever that consists of, make it your best friend in handling ethics issues. Because I know sometimes elected and appointed officials can be on the receiving end, right? Of unreasonable allegations of a conflict or breach of ethics. But if we have a good working familiarity with what rules were required to follow, then we're prepared for that response and we're prepared to do the right thing, right? And even in the face of the unreasonable allegation, we're ready for a good conversation with the person making that allegation by saying, I respectfully disagree because I know, right? What constitutes a conflict of interest under our charter and ordinances and I know when I have to recuse myself and so on and so forth. So on this slide, I just want to touch just briefly on a couple of subject matters. Conflicts of interest, there's actually, you have about, there's about three, three subcategories of that under your charter and ordinances, right? You've got a section there on just straight up financial interests, right? Where you have a code section that says, don't vote on any question in which you hold a financial interest. Okay? So check out those two sections. Those are sections 7.7 and 1.11.6 of your charter and your code. You've got a special section on city contracts, right? That says, council member shall not hold any direct or indirect pecuniary interest in a city contract over $100 is a narrow exception to that that might come into play. I don't know if it's used much, if at all in the city, but it's a very limited exception. Requires unanimous council approval, requires that the rest of the council members find that it's in the city's best interest. And then there's some rules about the bidding process as well. The third piece of that is then you also have a section about prior pecuniary interest, which reaches back to the six months before you became elected to council, right? That talks about if you received any financial benefits during that period, that can raise a potential ethics issue for you as well. There is an exception for the common public good on your conflict of interest rules as well. On confidential information, you don't have anything specific and expressed at a local level, which I think means that you're subject to the state code of ethics requirement on this, right? Which says, do not use or disclose confidential information that you gain as a council member to further substantially your own personal financial interest. The most common risk or question that I get at SERSA around this issue is, what happens if we go into executive session and then some of the information is shared outside of executive session, right? And when I look at that in terms of risk, I was asked, the people who call me and ask me, says, well, who's the injured party when that happens, right? And in my humble opinion, I think it's either the institution of the council, right? Or the individual who let that information go, knowing that they shouldn't have, right? Because that council member has to come back and say, do you trust me now? So whatever it looks like to you, have a good, healthy process for identifying what's confidential information, right? And the procedures by which it's disclosed. That confidentiality belongs to the council as a, as a whole. Finally, on gifts, I've cited your code section there, a couple, there's two standards there. They're basically reasonable person standards, right? In the order, in the area of gifts, it's just so intuitive about commonsensical, does the gift look strange? Is it obvious that there's something more going on with this gift? Your rules reflect that, right? Don't accept a gift that would tend to cause departure from faithful and impartial discharge of your duties. And don't accept any gifts where a reasonable person in your position would know that that gift is being given, right? To curry your favor on an upcoming vote or to reward you for a past vote. So the takeaway there is if the gift in any way looks odd, decline the gift, keep yourself in a safe place with regard to your gift. Next slide. All right. Finally, I just want to make a couple of suggestions around due process issues. As you, it's a very interesting job being a member of the governing body because you get to wear so many different hats, you know? Sometimes you're a legislator, making general rules that apply. Someone mentioned during reports that they wanted to bring back an ordinance for further discussion. That's, you know, those kind of legislative matters, they're not affecting anyone in particular, but they're affecting everybody in the abstract. But then as you know, sometimes you as council are called upon to make decisions affecting people's individual property, right? Recent example is, I think you had a rezoning here recently, right? Particularly at the council level, probably where you touch this issue is probably almost exclusively land use. I'm not sure if you handle any licensing matters at the council level. But for those matters, like, like a rezoning, where you're making a decision that affects an individual's property, right? You're bound to ensure that they get their due process, right? And so it's important that we follow what I call the due process rules of engagement, which have a very familiar source. This is an awesome power that we have at a local level. We want to have the power to decide whether or not that rezoning gets approved, or that license gets approved, or that other development matter gets approved. But under the due process clause, right? No person shall be deprived of life, liberty, or property without due process of law. If we're to have that power, then we have to accept that corresponding obligation to make sure we honor people's due process. make sure we honor people's due process rights. The due process rule, next slide, please. The due process rules of engagement, I put at the bottom of the slide a couple of videos with some more basic training from SARS on these issues. But those rules of engagement, we know, we know when they apply, right? Because we know when we have a quasi judicial matter coming up. But it all essentially evolves around a couple of core concepts. When we have a quasi judicial matter, we're going to have a probably additional notice, right? Those, you know, published notice, posted at the property, mailed notice to interested parties. Then we're going to have a hearing, an evidentiary hearing, right? Where the decision makers, you all, are duty bound under the due process clause to be fair and impartial and base your decisions solely upon the evidence that you hear at the hearing, right? And make your decision by applying your existing standard to that evidence presented to you at the hearing. That sounds a lot like a judicial trial. A lot less formal. We call it quasi judicial, but it really is a local government counterpart to conducting trials. So just a couple of tips. There's a lot more in the, in the videos that I hope are helpful to you. But a couple of tips, make sure that you limit your involvement in quasi judicial matters. Adjust your participation at the public hearing. The planning commission will do its role, the staff will do its role. To hold that power that the seven of you have, you need to make sure that you stay away from the buzz that's going on beforehand, right? Take comfort in the fact that you get to make the ultimate decision. But it does require that you limit your involvement, just as a judge, you kind of limit their involvement to the trial. Make sure you remain neutral. Don't make up your mind before the hearing and don't make any prejudicial statements before the hearing. Don't engage with other, with interested parties outside of the hearing. I'm sure the city's office has given you some training on that. And I think you had actually during your last rezoning, a little exercise, very nice and appropriate exercise you went through on making disclosures of ex parte contacts and so on. Pay close attention to that issue. I know that makes your job kind of a lonely job sometimes. You know, everybody knows this is the big item that's on your agenda, and their natural view is, I want to talk to my elected official about it, right? But we want you to be able to stay in the game, exercise that very important power that you have, right? So you arm yourself with whatever tools are helpful to you to remind that citizen or constituent. It's not that we don't want to hear from you. We'd love to hear from you. But as the council, as the final decision makers, in order to make sure everyone gets a fair shake, right, I can only engage with you during the public hearing process. Okay? Finally, as you do so well, make sure that when you're done with your public hearing and you're deliberating, focus on the appropriate criteria, right? And use what I call Sam's Rule of Why. Because I know sometimes deliberations can be a little rocky, right? And we may sometimes just fall, find ourselves falling into that, you know, problem where we start the deliberations and we're a little rough, right? And you say, well, I, I'm going to vote against this application because I just don't like it, or it's got problems. If we, as a deliberative group, just keep asking ourselves, well, why, why do you think that? Why do you think it's incompatible with the neighborhood? Why do you think it doesn't meet this criteria? And you keep having that discussion throughout your deliberation, a couple of things are going on. You're letting the people in the audience know the reasons for the decision you're about to make. But from our risk management standpoint, you're also making an awesome record, right, of the reasons for the decision. There is no retrial if we have a legal challenge to your decision. Your, your hearing is the hearing. So when you have a good, healthy deliberation each other about, why do you feel this way about this application? What do you think about this criteria? Right? What's our collective view of whether or not it meets that criteria? We're making an awesome record that will help defend the decision that you made. Okay? As I mentioned, the last two bullets there, the last, on the last bullet, we've got some links to some additional training on quasi judicial matters. Finally, to wrap things up, my suggestion six, next slide, please. Is to embrace wise leadership, to borrow some thoughts from, I think they're called your house rules in your rules of conduct. As a body, commit yourself to a no surprises approach with each other. Commit to having meetings that are free from gotcha moments or staff bashing. Deal effectively with discord. It's absolutely the case that every appointed elected body at some point is going to have disagreements. In fact, it would be very odd if you were always 7-0 all the time, given the diverse interest and viewpoints and perspectives on issues. But we're going to have disagreements. Don't let that bubble over into discord that ends up driving your meetings or your agenda or how you interact with each other, your staff, your citizens. It's a wise council that finds the time and the space to talk eyes up about, why do we have discord among us? How can we attempt to fix it? Finally, from our perspective, recognize that certain liability rests, particularly in the civil rights arena. Those claims can sometimes be influenced by a fact pattern that suggests the elected or appointed officials may have overreacted or reacted out of a retaliatory instinct or something like that, right? So the job sometimes feels like you've got a bullseye on you. But part of the job, particularly to help reduce the risk of civil rights liabilities, to make sure you commit to courtesy act and diplomacy. In this day and age, there are in fact folks who may show up during public comment with the express purpose of trying to get you to react in a certain way. And just recognize that, you know, we're going to commit ourselves not to doing that in a way that's going to create potential liability for you individually or for the city. Recognize finally, getting back to the 40,000 foot level, the team that's telling the entire organization, always keep in mind that you're the stewards and fiduciaries of the city's precious assets. And with that, I want to thank you all very, very much for inviting me to present to you this evening. I'll certainly take any questions that you have, but thank you, Mayor. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to visit with you.
Thank you. Councillor Baker?
It is my understanding that our really insurance policy, which is what I understand as a deductible to it, that we're on the hook for the first so much amount of money. Is that the reality?
Yes.
And how, and can, and you can, can you disclose how much that is?
I don't want to misspeak, so I'll just make sure that we get that information to you as soon as we can.
Excellent.
Thank you so much. Yeah. Yep, we do on the property. Oh, thank you, Marty.
We have a $250,000 deductible each and every claim.
Okay, thank you. And then on SARS, there's a couple of types of coverages that don't have a deductible, which is some coverage enhancements, but they're not the core liability in property. So for your core property liability claims, you have a deductible. Thank you.
Councillor Smith, since I don't, can't see your microphone when you light up, do you have anything?
No, thank you, Mayor.
Mayor Protem?
I have a quick question, and you kind of strayed quickly away from the social media. But I know that after the, since the last time that there was a presentation when I was on council and they kind of went through the do's and don'ts, or best practices, and I know some of that's ever changing. I'm just curious, in the material provided today, is there any changes with recent? I'd say in the last six months or so, I heard of an elected congressperson who had blocked somebody on social media, which we were told was kind of something we shouldn't do, but that they won in court. Has there been any shift in, in that guidance? Or is that still kind of the same practice that you shared with us last time?
Yeah. My apologies, I'm not familiar with that one fact pattern that you mentioned, so I don't know about that case. A lot of the conversations in the past 18 months has been around two cases, one out of Virginia involving a county commissioner and one involving former President Trump and a First Amendment institute out of Columbia, New Orleans. One of the developments in the last couple of months is that the Supreme Court granted a petition for cert on the, they call it the First Amendment Knights case or the Trump case. They granted cert and gave an instruction to the lower court to dismiss the appeals as moot, since President Trump is no longer president, they considered the appeals moot. That didn't change the law at this point in time, but it just cut off whether we're going to get any more law out of that series of litigation. The Supreme Court, one of the justices hinted at maybe some upcoming trend, and maybe it's whether some of the federal district courts will take a closer look at what it means to have a private entity having ultimate control over social media content. I don't think that's been sorted out yet, right? Because our advice to you all has been particularly pursuant to the Virginia case, which isn't controlling precedent, it's a second, we just don't have a sense of the future. But based on the Davidson case, we basically said that if it's got trappings of a governmental website and you use it to do your job, you invite your constituents to communicate with you there, then please assume that the content on there is probably a public forum, and you need to be careful in administering that content. Right? The simplest fact pattern being, if there's, if it is deemed a public forum and there's comments in the thread that you don't like, then don't delete those because that runs the risk of a First Amendment claim, right? So that's been that to date. I don't know if the concurring opinion out of the US Supreme Court will cause the lower court to not take a look at that. But I don't think we've sorted out fully what that means. You know, public forum is usually something you own and control completely, right? Ultimately, Facebook, Instagram, Snapchat, I got a lot of teenage kids, so there's a bunch of them. Snapchat, TikTok, whatever it is, they're all controlled by private corporations too, right? And ultimately, they have some, they have ultimate control over the content. So what's that interplay between a governmental public forum and it's put on a private commercial site?
Yeah, and that, that all makes sense to me, I guess. I was just curious because I think it was actually Congresswoman Bo Bart who blocked a former elected or whatever, blocked her off of her Twitter. And so that spun up the whole thing. From my understanding, the court sided with Congresswoman Bo Bart. You know, but I mean, I'm maintaining the same thing as far as like what you're saying, but I'm just curious if that changed at all with that one? Because I was surprised because we, if, well, for me anyway, I do exactly what you're saying. I use that to be able to communicate with my constituents. So I've toe'd the line of I don't delete anything, and you know, people do get nasty on there.
Yeah.
But I thought that was interesting when I saw that in the, in the news, that she was backed when she had blocked somebody, so.
Oh, okay. Okay. Well, we'll look for that. Yep, I always say, take comfort in the fact that even the threads, I can't remember the latest statistic, but there are hundreds of millions of comments posted every day, if that's not wrong. And the comments move down the thread pretty quickly, and then they become distant archived comments. And then my last piece on social media is that, as I was saying, our handbook here is it's, it's a great tool for staying in touch, but probably more so for lighthearted items or feel-good items or keeping your constituents, you know, with light touches about this is what's going on. Sometimes I know, right, you'll see that you may be just perusing social media and you're going to see some misinformation, right?
No, never.
But we encourage public entities to think, you know, think hard about the who, where, when, and how do we want to, as a public entity, correct misinformation that we see on social media? Maybe it's, if it's really bad and it's about something that's pending that's going on, maybe the light touch is, here's a link to the city's webpage on this issue where you can find information about the current status, right, from the city's perspective of this actual issue, right? Rather than, and on quasi judicial matters, you shouldn't be jumping into prey at all because of the ex parte, right? But your constituents don't know that. They want, they want you to, they think that you should be able to engage, but it's with that power to make those decisions, you have to make sure you commit to the process.
You actually spurred another question with the ex parte. So understanding those things have to go through a first and second reading. Obviously, constituents oftentimes will want to know why we voted a particular way. And I would imagine at some point that's appropriate to be able to share that once it's all done and second reading is clear. Or would that be something you would, like, what would your advice be, the proper way to educate a resident, sort of just be clearly point them back to the hearing, which hopefully you've done your part in sharing that and saying, here's the hearing, I recommend you go listen to it? Same thing with misinformation. I mean, because sometimes that, that hearing may not clarify in a way that, that is hitting the resident so that they understand. So just, you know, maybe you could add a little bit of context to that with those being kind of looming things that we deal with.
Yeah, I think your first best defense on that is the full deliberation. Put on the record the full discussion and reasons why you're voting for a matter, and then direct your inquiry, inquiry back to that, right? And it can be with the pat on the back of, we had a full discussion of this, and as you'll see when you watch the tape, we as a council really got into that issue and talked it through from every perspective, and we had some disagreement, but you can see why I voted the way I did when you watched the video. To give you a war story on the risk side of it, which is what we're particularly interested in, I once had a very contentious Landy's hearing with a 4-3 vote. And after the vote, the four on the prevailing side wrote a letter to the editor to further explain their vote, very controversial development. The problem from the risk perspective that we had was there were some things in the letter to the editor that didn't match what was spread during the deliberations. And so that was, you know, you can't see my shriek and my, my mask. That was a bit of a risk problem because now I had off the record, right, from the actual decision makers, suggestions that their votes were for reasons that were not put of record. Now, I know that is not the fact pattern, but sometimes claimants will scrutinize that and look for the smallest thing that they can possibly find to use against, right? Or in favor of their asserted claim. So I would, I would suggest, now, on legislative matters, you know, there's more leeway on that, right? But even on legislative matters, if you're working on ordinance, I'll just call an example out of thin air, if you have an ordinance that says you decide you're going to require solar for every new development. You have every right after the vote to say, well, further to what I said during the hearing, here's the reason why I voted in favor. That's a legislative matter, it's not creating a third party risk, right? But you want to be champions of your process and your ways of decision making so that you can direct folks back to what happened here. And what happened here fully shows people what went on and why decisions were made, and that's a great. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming tonight.
Thank you very much. Thanks, everyone.
Are we all good? That brings us to community gathering spaces and demonstration garden project on City Hall's North Lawn. City Manager Andrews? Oh, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. Introduce Lance Johnson of our Parks Recreation and Libraries Department to introduce and make the presentation this evening, and also to help facilitate the answering of any questions you have after the presentation.
Thank you, City Manager Andrews. I'm going to ask my team virtually tonight if they can hear me. They were saying that Mr. Light was hard to hear virtual, so I just want to check with my team. They're going to text me here real quick, so just bear with me for a second. Hopefully, they're all still listening.
Mr. Lance Johnson, this is Councillor Smith. He can hear you better, so thank you.
Thank you very much for your input. Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem, councillors, thank you for this opportunity. Lance Johnson, back in my old role as Parks and Golf Manager and Parks Recreation and Libraries. Also joining me tonight virtually are Blake Ramsey, our Park Superintendent, Drew Beckwith, Senior Water Resource Analyst, Laura Belanger, and Lindsay Rogers, who are with Western Resource Advocates, and Victoria Arling, who's with Water Now. And they will all be available to answer any questions as needed after the presentation's over. Tonight's presentation is very brief and more of a visual aid for the concepts we are proposing. Based on some of the questions we received today, and to help facilitate questions, further questions, I'd like to make a couple of clarifications on our presentation before I start. Western Resource Advocates will be providing assistance with many other aspects of non-essential turf removal than just the City Hall North Lawn project, and they are available to provide more specifics as needed. Work of WRA during the entire scope of this project aligns with and supports our ongoing water conservation efforts and turf reduction program we have implemented in Parks Recreation Libraries over three years ago. City Hall North Lawn Project is in the conceptual-only stage, and just one part of the work WRA will help support. Based on the infancy of the project, any costs we have provided are very rough estimates, and we hope to bring back more specific and defined construction costs later in the spring. The ARPA funding allocated to this project was part of an overall budget process approved by council in the fall of 2021. Our presentation is conceptual only and provides what some of these concepts could look like moving forward. And with that, we will get to the presentation. Our presentation tonight is Community Gathering Spaces and Demonstration Garden Project on City, City Hall's North Lawn. Invasioning a new community gathering place. As part of our overall project, we would like to open the inaccessible and unused north lawn of City Hall to our residents. Create new walking trails, shelters, and demonstration gardens. Allow residents to explore more water-wise landscaping choices and strengthen the city's water and drought resilience. Next slide, please. You might have to click through, I think there were some extra slides in there. You might have to click through, I think there were some extra slides in there. Thank you. And now, next slide. Thank you. Accessibility, education, and transformation. We would like to incorporate a variety of water-wise and drought-tolerant perennials, shrubs, trees, and grasses into the area, providing an interactive experience, allowing visitors to scan QR codes on signs and obtain information on water-wise alternatives. Help residents make informed decisions when it comes to efficient water use options. With these concepts, we would like to create new informal gathering spaces the public and city employees can use. We also envision community shelters that can be used for meetings or educational programming. What are some of the far-reaching benefits? Ongoing, efficient use of water has major drought, environmental, and economic benefits for the city and our utility customers. This project will save taxpayer dollars on the cost of maintaining and watering five acres of lawn. City currently spends approximately $36,000 a year to maintain the north lawn with little benefit to our residents. Next slide. I keep forgetting to ask you to go to that next slide. If you moved it. And one more. And one more. Sorry, got way ahead of, way ahead of myself. All right, there you go. Thank you. By City Hall's North Lawn. We identified the City Hall North Lawn as a case study site due to lack of accessibility, lack of current use, and offers residents south of 92nd Avenue access to green space closer to them. Next slide, please. How will we accomplish this? Western Resource Advocates selected Westminster to participate as a pilot community in their enabling large-scale replacement of non-essential turf project. This project is supported by a grant funded by the Colorado Water Conservation Board and others. Next slide, please. WRA and the project team will provide technical and program support to the city over a two-year period, free of charge, to conduct a community-wide non-essential turf assessment, assist the city with implementation challenges and pathways to success, develop a partial specific case study, or what we are calling the City Hall North Lawn Project. Next slide, please. In our final slide, where are we in this process? Staff and the project team have met to select a site, conducted professional irrigation audit, and discussed design features. First preliminary design concept meeting was held last month on December 9th. Design concepts and educational components will be refined and presented for public and stakeholder input in the spring of 2022. This ends our presentation. Thank you for your time. We will now entertain any questions you have.
Mayor Pro Tem Demont.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Mr. Johnson, for the presentation. I have a couple of quick things. And so I know that the final design's not created, so it's hard to say what the offset in maintenance costs would be for that, this area that you're proposing to redo. But just doing some math as far as what the funds that we allocated were to this project, the return on investment to residents, if you completely wiped it out, which I imagine is not the case, is over 46 years. So I'm just trying to think through how that's, you know, a big value add. I mean, I certainly have been a proponent if we're going to encourage residents to find more water-wise ways to landscape, that they, you know, that we're kind of a front-runner in that. However, with the needs that we have coming out of a pandemic, both in, say, public safety, our roads, and in our business community, trying to understand how this is the best bang for our buck is what I'm trying to understand. Granted, I was one of the ones who voted yes on the overall package, but this was part of the package I did not, did not like. But the majority of council seemed to like this, this one. So trying to understand that is going to be key to me. And just to, you know, kind of put a pin in that, this is the same thing I've heard from residents. When residents have had a professional come to their home and say, hey, I'd like to decrease my water use, you know, what is it going to take for me to use more water-wise plants and do the ziriscaping and all the things that we're recommending? And I've heard from multiple residents where they were told, you're not going to see the ROI in your life. And so that, that is concerning to me and that's obviously situational. But, you know, that's in the line, I only share that because it's in the line of how I'm looking at this. What's the return on investment? What are we really getting the public value for those dollars that we're getting federally?
Right. No, and I understand, yes, the return on investment, just taking the savings of water and labor alone, just through, through our department, is very, very, very small and is a long return on investment. If maybe you indulge me for a second, I kind of anticipated that question. And I think knowing the Counselor Baker, I'm an acre-foot guy, but I know Counselor Baker's a gallons-per-square-foot guy, so I'm going to kind of give you some numbers that I kind of came up with, just kind of give you some ideas of where the other return on investment might be for our residents and for our utility. The city's made up of 34 square miles, basically, about 22,000 acres, just a little under 22,000 acres. If we took, we got residences, businesses, parks, anything that has Kentucky bluegrass, and we take just 25 of those acres, and you take that total amount of that 25 acres, comes to roughly an annual basis of watering it 24 gallons per square foot, a little over a million gallons of water per year. If you take those numbers and extrapolate them out and using the 40% savings that we would have in water that we're rejecting for City Hall turf project, you would end up having, use saving about 11 million gallons of water with over that 25 acres. So if you took that and extrapolated those numbers, I'm going kind of high level here with numbers. If you took that number and as each resident is charged $1,000, in thousands of gallons is how they're charged. So if we just use a very, very minimal cost, I think 486 is our current tier-one gallon for potable water, just for simplicity's sake, using $5 per 1,000 gallons, we would end up saving $78,000 a year, either a resident or a business combined in that 25 acres. You take that over $1.7 million, now you've got your ROI down to maybe 22 years instead of 46 years. So there is an overall return on investment. I think City Manager Andrews used a term today as we were discussing, I don't remember what that was, but not just the return on investment of what we see directly on that front lawn, but also what the entire city sees when everybody makes an effort to reduce their water by using xeric, natural-type grasses, those types of things. So there is another different type of return on investment that goes throughout the entire city, and that's just based on 25 acres, which is 0.1% of the entire city acreage itself.
That, I mean, that gives a little bit more context, but I guess without knowing exactly what the cost is going to be to actually build out something that we don't have a plan for, and I'm looking for, for public value out of those dollars. I mean, I've seen or heard of other municipalities that are doing things like grants for small businesses in order to upgrade their HVAC. And if I think of ways that we can help mitigate the risk of COVID and, well, really, any airborne pathogen, those seem like, those are some of those silver linings that we found out of COVID. Some of the other things that I think about between roads or even, you know, public safety is something I'm always going to hammer on. And when we have a situation nationally where that's less of a desirable job to do, is there ways that we could use some of these dollars in order to have incentives to, to maintain people and attract people to our police department? So those are some of the things in, that, that I have in my mind, that I feel like that amount of money could go a long way. And I won't, and I only pointed out to say, is there an in-between where maybe we could chip away at, at this project because it is a huge lawn? Do we have to redo the whole thing? Is there a smaller sampling that we could do where we are showcasing some of these water-wise things that I think we would all agree are good things for us to showcase when we're trying to encourage conservation with water, but not taking that chunk of money and putting it all there because that is a big chunk of money? So some of that's obviously for my colleagues to think about as we go through this. So there's not necessarily the answer I'm looking for, but I just want everybody to understand why I think that we really need to rethink this portion of it and maybe figure out what, where there's an in-between. At least that would be my preference.
Counselor Numala.
Thank you. I had some questions that came to me when I was reading through the agenda memo. So I'm just going to go through. So my first question was whether Western Research Associates has conducted demonstrations like this in other municipalities, or is this their first foray, foray through this pilot project or demonstration garden like this? And if so, do they have an idea on how many people would actually frequent the gardens, both residential and business? And are there targets and planned outreach to hit those numbers?
Yeah, we, we sent those questions to Western Resource Advocates this afternoon. I got them back very late this afternoon and did forward a lot of information. I didn't even have really time to read it. I just wanted to get it off to you. But let's see, Lindsey Rod, Lindsey or Laura, could you maybe hop on the call and help answer that question, please? Hopefully, they're still there.
Sure. Yep, we are. I don't know why my camera's not working. I apologize for that. I don't know if that's on my end or your end. But yes, thank you, Counselor Numala. Yeah, so we, Western Research Advocates, we have a very long, successful history of working with municipalities on water conservation and water reuse, but this is a new project for us. This is something that we haven't done before. And we did select Westminster to be one of the three communities that we're working with on this, and we're very excited about that. And the pilot parcel is just a portion of that project, as was mentioned. But, but we did a little research today trying to answer that question, and we talked to Colorado Springs Utilities. They are, they have a demonstration garden. And I would also point you to, and I think we can get you the link afterwards, but plantselect.org, they have a list of all the demonstration gardens or many of the demonstration gardens in Colorado, so you can look at those. But Colorado Springs, they said before COVID, they changed their programming during COVID, but they, they did a survey, as with many demonstration gardens, they're open to the public, so they don't have exact counts, but 20% of their customers had, in the survey, said they had visited the demonstration garden within the previous five years. One thing that came across clearly is the programming that as a city, you were, you could choose to focus around the demonstration garden, would really affect the number of folks that come through. You will have some residents, you know, that just kind of wander in on their own because they're interested. But there's also a lot of opportunities if there are, you know, school classes that go through or specific educational courses or whatnot, that can really boost numbers. And for example, Colorado Springs, they do a bunch of courses and they said they get between 2,000 and 2,500 individuals a year through their gardens. And a lot of that is through, you know, enticing folks through, through courses and things like that. And then in northern, the city of Greeley, we also chatted with them quickly, and they said, they did a survey and 23% of the folks that responded said they had also been through the gardens. Those are pretty good percentages of numbers. And then Northern Water, which is a conservancy district, so they provide, they're a water provider to a bunch of different municipalities, they, they tend to focus their tours on city and municipal entities and then also HOA boards and committees for tour groups. So then those also have that, you know, that expands outward, right? Even though you're getting a certain number of individuals, they're in leadership positions, so it has a larger impact. So, so it really varies and I would say it would largely, it can be impacted by what the city would do to, to take advantage of it.
Okay.
And if I could maybe just add on to that, we obviously, one of the reasons why we chose City Hall is the number of, amount of traffic that goes by City Hall every day, the number of people who come to City Hall for business. It's a very highly visible area, number one. And number two, we obviously have a great communication and outreach team that can certainly, we do a lot of public outreach and be able to get to those people and kind of advertise the site as, as a demonstration plot and be able to come, come see it and come, see examples of what you could use in your yard. So we did take that into account when we chose the City Hall site.
Thank you. So I suppose if this were to come back, it would be helpful to understand what our targets are in terms of what portion of the community are we trying to reach and what kind of, you know, I'm looking also for the return on investment for this too. And, you know, does this result in ultimately people actually being able to make changes to their yards? Because, you know, it is expensive to do and, I don't know, maybe the people who can afford are the ones who come. That would be helpful to just understand like what, what might be the expectations of the impact of this. So another question I had is, with the estimate ranging for the cost of this, this improvement ranging between 1.3 and 3.3 million, I was just kind of interested to understand why was it so, such a big variable between those two?
We had, we had no intention of coming and doing this presentation tonight. We were going to move along with the process, get designs done, get construction documents done, get very, very good bid cost estimates put together, and then come back to council and talk about this project and see what you thought. So we really have no idea that $5 a square foot might be a very good cost, the $15 a square foot might be a good cost. We just don't know because we aren't far enough along in the design process to even really have a handle on the exact cost of what those will be in the future. And with costs changing every day with any construction project, you have to figure it's going to be going up rather than going down, at least in the next year or so, would be my guess. So we apologize for not being able to zero it in a lot better, but we just don't have the information necessary right now to be able to do that.
Yeah, I've heard that construction costs for infrastructure projects have gone about 40%. So what the, is the expectation that we would utilize the $1.7 million of the ARPA fund allocation for this and then potentially utilize other funding sources outside of current general funds to, to fill the gap?
I think the, in the ideal world, we would like to have grant funding for the entire project. Obviously, if the, if the cost of the project would be $3 million, are we going to have a $3 million grant total? Yeah, it's hard to say, kind of doubtful. But is, if we have the availability, at least of the ARPA funding, to use as matching funds for any grants that we go after, that will certainly be a very huge benefit to us as far as being able to leverage the dollars we have. And I would hope that we'd be able to do this cost, do this project with either all the ARPA funding we have, hopefully less than what we have allocated currently, and have more of the project being paid for by grant funding. That would be the goal.
Okay. And then, so you did mention this before, I'd asked, what was the, what is the cost per square foot estimate for the landscaping improvements alone? And how might this compare to what we might spend in other parks in replacement of turf with native grasses?
I really don't, I really can't answer that question as far as, since we don't know what the, the cost would be, I really can't give you a really good answer on that one. So I, I'm sorry about that.
Well, currently, you, you did mention in the presentation that WRA is working with the city to do turf replacement elsewhere in the city. So in other parks, I'm assuming, or in our golf courses, we've either done some or are planning to do some. Do we have?
Yeah, and I, off the top of my head, I don't know that exact number. I could find a number for you and some other smaller projects we've done, which would not be on this type of a scale, but I can, I can find a number for you, at least give you a better, better estimate than a, than no answer at all.
Okay, that would be good. And then, yeah, and if you could add in what a residential owner might need to spend to replace their turf, that'd be good just to have all that, you know, what are we spending on the north lawn for this demonstration garden? What would it just, you know, in our other parks, what are we spending for turf replacement? And what a residential property owner?
I do have a, I do have a quick answer. I have people smarter than me that are actually listening in also. With some, some of the areas that we've redone already, we've done close to 25 acres of pure conversion within parks as it is in the last three and a half years. One of the cost estimates we are giving, I could give you is it's roughly about $1,000 per acre to convert to native grass.
What's it being converted to, just like a native?
Either fine fescues or native grasses, actual native grass itself. There's a couple of different varieties we can use. So just depending on the area, what kind of maybe passive use we might think might go there, we try to kind of take that into account when we, when we do that replacement of that Kentucky bluegrass.
Okay, that's helpful. And then one of my questions was, is there an option to include plantings that produce food? Because as I was walking around, a lot of our neighbors, a lot of people have these awesome gardens. And, yeah, in the front yard, in the backyard, yeah. And so I think that would be of great interest. And so I think that would be of great interest. And so I'm just hoping that when you go out to the community, really do listen to what are they wanting to learn about? And food production might be one of those.
We have discussed that concept, and just, just so you're aware, we have, the site is watered with reclaimed water. We would have to bring potable water back into the site to be able to do a garden. We can't use reclaimed water to grow any fruits or vegetables. And we'd also have to kind of isolate the garden area, make sure we don't have any overspray things like that with, from the reclaimed site. So it would just be a matter of semantics and how we did it. And if, if the community thought that was something they would like to do, this certainly would be a good addition for another community garden in this area of town.
Right, okay. And you already answered my question about the ARPA funds already being allocated, but maybe that's a question with the train of questioning that Councilor, or Mayor Protem Demott had regarding the ARPA fund allocation. Is it set in stone, or is that up to us to change? I don't, I'm trying to just get a gauge on that.
Yeah, thank you, Mary. Thank you, Councilor Nirmala. Larry Dorr is with us tonight, and I think if I could ask Larry just to describe how the ARPA funding has progressed to this point and what it means moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. Larry Dorr, Chief Financial Officer, speaking. And just regarding the allocation, let me, let me just describe that one half of the ARPA funds have been received by the city. We anticipate the second half being received later this year in the spring of 2022. And through council's formal budgeting process, money has been formally appropriated. Typically, our staff would move forward on all capital projects with formal appropriations of the city council. And our, our staff in Parks, Recreation, and Libraries is doing that now, but understanding that there was a need for a check-in with city council, that's what we're here doing tonight in describing some next steps in the process. But we're seeking your feedback on, and consensus on moving forward. And as much as these funds are appropriated, the next steps would be as, as described here by Mr. Johnson, further design and evaluation and so forth. But the purpose of tonight is to, again, get to further direction on next steps. Thank you.
So I take that we're not in absolute stone.
Thank you, Mary. That would be, that would be correct.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple other things that I thought of while I was listening to you and Councilor Nirmala. One is with, with the reclaimed water, the, when you were talking about acre feet and the water we get back, you were doing those calculations with the reclaimed. Is that accurate?
That was, that was just water. Yeah, it's a potable, potable water reclaimed. I was using the $5, which is the tier one for potable water to residents. So that's the number I was using, was $5 per thousand.
So for this particular project, then it might be a little bit different, that water cost? Different?
Yes, the return, the return on investment will be much higher if City Hall was on potable water. Obviously, with being on reclaimed, it is, it is cheaper. So there is, that, that lessens the return on investment, obviously.
Okay. And the other thing that I thought of, and this is just something that, that I always think of after the fact, but when we start looking at projects like this in ways that we're encouraging conservation and good plant practice, call it, are we also talking to our partners like the Butterfly Pavilion, the work that they're doing in pollinator districts, I think is actually pretty important for the whole country to be doing, probably beyond the country? Are, is that partners that you would look to as well to see how maybe they could incorporate something in these designs so that people could see, you know, ways that they could encourage those kind of environments for bees and bugs and such that, that the, you know, that they work with? Because anybody who actually takes the time to go nerd out on that stuff, actually very, very important to our ecosystem. If we're going to encourage things such as natural plants, I imagine that would just seem like a natural progression.
Yes, we, that's one of the concepts I have, we didn't even broach in the, in the agenda memo, but pollinator gardens, we would certainly be partnering with Denver Potanic Gardens, Butterfly Pavilion. We, as we're progressing over at City Park and Restoration over there for the Big Dry, the sewer interceptor project, we're looking at pollinator gardens along that area of Big Dry Creek. So that's something we've incorporated in a lot of things we're starting to do now, is looking at pollinator gardens, just because of the fact it is, is important to the ecosystem.
Great, thank you.
Councilor Smith?
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Okay, a lot of my questions have been asked by Councilor Nirmala, but I do have one that came up as part of this discussion. If we at one point, I know that there's not a cost to work with our partners on this, or they're working with us at no cost. So I would presume that there would be no cost if we were at one point needing to walk away from this project. Is that correct? Is that a good assumption?
Yes, thank you for that question. So Western Resource Advocates, all the work they are doing is being funded by the grant that they receive from the Colorado Water Conservation Board. So there is no cost to the city for this project whatsoever, and we could just walk away whenever we, whenever we felt appropriate, if we thought that was something we should do.
Okay. And I guess one of my thoughts as far as, one of the statements mentioned was, and correct me if I didn't hear this wrong, but my understanding was that you said that it was 25 acres of turf conversion that we've accomplished within the city, and 1,000, it took about $1,000 per acre to convert that to native grass. Is that correct?
That's a rough approximation, yes.
Okay, so, I mean, I'm just looking at this from simplistic terms, so that's about $25,000. So I'm confused as to why five acres would be one, more than $1 million, potentially $3 million. That doesn't compute in my mind.
That's a very good question. So that $1,000 was all done in-house by, by staff alone. This project would probably, would have to be contracted out. Obviously, contractor cost is going to be much more expensive. The irrigation system also needs to be revamped in order to provide the irrigation necessary. We go, we're going basically from overhead sprays for turf to more, more in general. 89% of the entire site would be misters, bubblers, below-ground systems that we have to completely redo. So most of the cost of the project would come in when it comes to the irrigation renovation.
Okay. So, I mean, realistically, if we were asking residents to do that and they had, I don't know, an acre, let's just say, I mean, it would, if they're under the same provisions that the city is under, they would be looking at more than $1,000 for replacement of their, of their grass, if you will. And so I guess more, this is more of just a statement, is I'm, I'm concerned that if we're looking at grants in order to accomplish this, which, don't get me wrong, that's, that's admirable and something that we should always do for our projects. However, I'd hate to set the precedent that it would be then required for our residents to also try and look for grants to try to accomplish the same thing that we are. And along with Mayor Protem, you know, I was part of that vote to move this forward, but I think that we also need to be mindful of how we are educating and promoting these waterized activities. And I know that we have that within our city as far as the grants that we offer our residents. But this is a little bit concerning as far as us trying to educate in a manner that may not have the greatest level of return. And just on the face of it, right? I think that that, this is something that obviously we need to look a little bit further into. Don't get me wrong, I think conserving water and its necessity towards our waterized activities is important. I just think that right now, this is sparking a red flag for me to just kind of step back and say, is this the right venture to move forward with, especially for the long term? So, but thank you for getting to, you're right, you answered a lot of the questions that had come to council, and a lot of it had been similar in nature. And one of the ones I had mentioned was, if we are, and you might have this on the tip of your fingers here, but one of my thoughts was, is that if we're adding the maintenance costs of paths and gazebos or shelters or seating areas, is that an undue cost that we're now adding that we didn't once have? If you can kind of speak to that, I know you answered it in here, but I'd like us to kind of have that on record and have folks understand that a little bit more.
Sure, there's always, there is always cost to any, any piece of infrastructure you have in a project. If you put in a concrete sidewalk, you really have any maintenance over the course of, you know, an entire year? Yes, you have a little bit. Maybe you have to sweep every now and then, maybe you have to move some rocks or some mulch off the, up the sidewalk from one of your perennial beds. The maintenance cost on a concrete path is very minimal. Same with a gravel path or a crushed granite path. That path is going to be installed, it's going to be installed properly. Hopefully, it's installed properly enough where you don't have to worry about washouts and drainage issues. So the maintenance on that path also is going to be very minimal. So I think if you're constructing to be very sustainable, you're making sure that the contractor's going to be using best practices when it comes to making those installations, and you keep your maintenance costs as low as possible. Maintenance of that, of a site like this is going to be mostly any of the perennial beds, gardens, those types of things. You have weeding to do and those types of things, which is, it was labor intensive, but it's not like mowing five acres of turf twice a week.
Sure, okay, great, thank you very much. That's all my questions thus far. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Baker?
Thank you. Let's begin with Western Resource Advocates. It's my understanding that they're a think tank or a lobby group, that they do not possess any technical knowledge on soils or irrigation systems or park design or anything else like that. Is that accurate or inaccurate?
I'm going to.
Maybe can have, let that, really let them say.
Yes, Laura, would you like to answer that question?
Yes, I would, and thank you, Councilor Baker. We are a nonprofit conservation organization. I'm a water resources engineer myself. You know, we do occasionally do some, some lobbying work, but it's a very small percentage of what we do. We actually have a great deal of expertise in water conservation, but you're absolutely right, we are not soil experts. And that is why our project team that we have assembled who's working with us on this includes a landscaper, ecoscape, environmental design. They are working on the landscape design and the irrigation system retrofit information. We also have for project economists, I apologize that didn't come up sooner, but that might be of interest. We are going to toss this all out. And so, you know, in the spring, there will be more information available. We're planning on costing out what the design that we land on. And again, it's not us, it's our project economists who we've hired to be a consultant on the project. It'll cost out the cost of the project, and also it is going to look at those long-term O and M and maintenance costs, comparing it to the status quo versus if it were to, you guys were to implement the landscape retrofit. And so, and then also Victoria Arling, who's on the call with us with Water Now Alliance, she is also contracted with the project, and she's a, they have a lot of expertise with pursuing like water smart grants and whatnot. And so if the city were to be interested in pursuing this project, she's available to help pursue grants for that. And we can also help with like CWCB additional funding and things like that. So yes, absolutely, Councilwoman Baker, we are not experts, and that is why we have pulled together a really great team to work with us.
Okay, and the really thrust of this project seems to be defined by three terms, one of which is very positive, one of which is very negative, and one of which is uncomfortable. It's certainly an educational project, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and it's certainly an indoctrination project, isn't it?
It depends on how you define indoctrination, but I think we're providing opportunities for people to learn and make their own informed decisions on what, what would be best for them as far, when it concerns water conservation.
You want to persuade.
I would like them to make their own decisions.
But you want to persuade them to make a decision that you think is most advantageous to, I mean, the community and even the individual property owner?
No, sir, I don't think that's the case.
Okay. And I would also call it propaganda, is that you want to take reality and spin it to, again, persuade. But that's my opinion. Number two, you said there was little benefit to a green lawn in front of City Hall. How do you find little benefit?
If you define it as non-essential turf, the only time that anybody uses that turf is when we mow it or weed eat it.
Well, that, again, the next question, what is essential turf?
I would say essential turf would be a sports field used for soccer, baseball, softball, turf on a golf course that produces revenue and enjoyment for people to play on the golf course. I think there's certainly different, different aspects when it comes to not essentially essential turf.
So on a golf course, the turf adds to the enjoyment of the individuals using it, correct?
The conditions of the golf course certainly play into the, into the people's decision to play the golf course that they are playing, yes, I would agree with that.
So wouldn't turf where basically someone gets benefit of that then become essential turf?
If there is a benefit to someone, then yes, it would be, could be called essential turf.
And in the paradigm in almost every one of our neighborhoods, I do not know of a one where this is not the paradigm, isn't really turf grass well the predominant paradigm?
Yes, I would, I would agree with that.
Right, and isn't part of the point of this is to try to persuade, is to purpose, or try to persuade the embracing of a new paradigm?
I don't think it's the point of trying to persuade. Like I said before, I think it's, I think within our department, Parks, Recreation, Libraries, and with Public Works and Utilities, I think we have, I think we think of this responsibility of the city to set a good example for our residents. Water conservation is important. At least that's my opinion. And I think that at least offering solutions to allow people to see different ways to maintain your home, your home, your residence, a HOA detention area, whatever it might be, different options, I think, is always good, and let them make their own decision. If they feel that turf grass is great, I'm a turf guy, I love turf. But if people want other options, I think this is a good way to show them those other options.
And who are we conserving the water for?
Personally, I think we're conserving it for future water users in the city of Westminster.
So basically, you want to take the water being used by existing neighborhoods now so we can give it to new people moving into the city?
I think if we have the ability to provide water for future residents, whether that's more residents or less residents, I think that would be our goal, is to just conserve water, to be, make sure that we are leaving the city of Westminster better than what we are leaving it for somebody else in the future.
Yeah, well, again, that's, that's a judgment call, because I think allowing people to maintain the neighborhoods they have now is an essential use of water, absolutely essential. And to coerce people or to persuade people or to propagandize people to give up water, I think has some ugly aspects. So let me see, other questions? We're using purple water on that section right now, correct?
The entire City Hall site campus is reclaimed water, yes.
And if it's five acres, and we're using 24 inches of water, because that's what CSU said, so we're using 10 acre feet of water, right?
If you're, I guess my calculation.
I should have brought, I should have brought the whiteboard.
With my calculations, Kentucky bluegrass would typically use three acre feet of water per year, which I believe is a little less than what your.
I think it's only two acre feet.
In general?
Because it's basically half an inch every three day. So that's five inches a month. We have a five-month irrigation system, 25 inches rounded off, 24 inches, which is two feet, so two acre feet of water to keep the Kentucky bluegrass.
I'll go, I'll go with your numbers, yes, so 10 acre feet.
Okay, 10 acre feet, which times 325,000 gallons per acre foot is 3.25 million. Or 3,250 K gals, that's $6 apiece. Isn't that more like $20,000 a year? How does you get to $36,000, $36,000 a year?
$36,000 a year. So in my, in my, what I gave you for return on investment, I gave the example, if we took 25 acres and converted it from Kentucky bluegrass to some alternative.
I think earlier in your presentation, you said you would hope. I think, I think earlier in your presentation, you said you would hope to get a $36,000 savings per year out of these five acres.
Oh, yes, you're, you're correct.
Mayor?
Uh, $18,000 savings.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Counselor Smith has dropped off, so can we take a brief pause so she can get on back on?
Sure.
Thank you.
And I think-
We'll take a 10-minute bio break. Counselor Baker?
Thank you. So we left off with how did we get to $36,000 when I got to only about $20,000? Do we have any insight into that? Did you get a chance to-
The $36,000 is a combination of labor, which is, we estimated about $3,500 per square, per acre, and then roughly $18,000 in water costs.
Okay. Well, then you came to the same number as I did. That's absolutely-
Yes, we did.
Thank you. Uh, it's always been my experience that mowing a lawn is the most effective maintenance you can do, is the lowest cost maintenance. A garden, as you pointed out, takes weeding. That being so labor intensive, it's, it's very expensive. So I guess I, I don't understand how turning it into a garden would be less maintenance than the existing lawn it is.
I think in my, in my general experience that you also, not only, it's just not mowing when you eliminate turf grass, you're reducing emissions, fuel costs, transportation costs for labor, reducing noise pollution. There's many other things that go into using a piece of equipment. You can utilize equipment in other areas of the park system. Weeding and maintaining scrub beds, perennial beds, if it is constructed correctly and used with proper materials for mulch and things like that, I, I would say would be a less labor-intensive act than mowing a five acres of turf twice a week.
And how much water is the garden going to take?
If you're using your 24 inches for turf grass-
Right.
The rule of thumb, and I think this is a very, I would say maybe, maybe overly optimistic number, but they say for most perennial, you can go 10 inches for perennials. So you're reducing your water use by about 60%.
Okay. So we'd be, so we'd be taking that $20,000 of water cost, water cost, and we'd be reducing it to $8,000.
Yeah, we've, we've taken, and we're, we're using, actually using 40% increase instead of 60% decrease. So, I'm sorry, decrease in water costs, just to be a little more conservative when it comes to our, our projections.
Which then pushes out the ROI part of it.
Yes, it would. But I also would be more comfortable when I have better numbers, understand exactly what it costs in the future.
I'm not asking for precision here. I'm talking general concept of what it is. And I appreciate the forthright answer.
You're welcome.
I, I truly do. I truly do. Uh, because this is purple water we'd be saving, is there some other place that the purple water is needed or not? Or do you even know that? This is more a water question.
I think that would be a question for Public Works and Utilities as far as their distribution system.
Yeah. Because it's my understanding, we don't have enough purple water for all the users we have.
Drew Beck was on the, on the call. Drew, would you have an answer for that? Or is that something we, we need to get an answer on later that we can send to Counselor Baker?
Counselor Baker, will you go ahead and just repeat the question for me? So I heard it all in full.
Uh, my really question was, is we're using purple water on this site, so we see savings in purple water, but are there other places in the city where we could then substitute that purple water we saved here for really potable water?
Yeah. Drew Beck was Senior Water Resources Analyst, Public Works and Utilities. It's, it's an interesting question. What I can tell you right now is that we are undergoing a reclaimed master planning effort that started a couple months ago, where we will be looking into those exact kinds of questions. Where are we using purple pipe water? Where aren't we? Where could we? What are the, what are the challenge with the existing infrastructure? Where are we in good places? And all, and all sorts of other stuff. So I, I can't answer that right now. And our master plan will be able to get to that specificity when it's complete.
Thank you so much. Okay, those are all my questions and, uh, it's certainly my opinion that this is the time to change really direction on how we use this money, because I think this is, is not the best use of the money. So, thank you, Mayor.
Counselor Baker, if I could just, I want to go back to your very, very first question. I didn't get a chance to kind of respond after Laura had finished. But when you're asking about experts on the project, I would be remiss if I didn't mention the fact that I think we have some of the best turf grass experts in the entire state, if not the region, that are on our golf and park staff. So we have plenty of experts in-house when it comes to turf grass. Just, uh, just my opinion.
Turf grass and other grass too, because we have an, you run an entire parks department where we have to be pretty skilled at what we're doing. And, and I have thought more than once, couldn't we just cut out four acres of sod, have some sod company come in? They could pay us to cut out the sod, because sod is valuable material. And then we just put that into native grasses and wildflowers. We would have to mow it once a year because grass needs an insult or a challenge. I doubt we're going to graze any creatures on it. So we would have to cut it once a year. But otherwise than that, we could just put it into that and let it be that way, as long as we had a good edge on. And we could do that all in-house and it'll cost less more than a million dollars. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Yusadi?
Thank you, Mayor. Just, uh, just have some comments on this project. I'm in full support of this project because of all the reasons that you've given, Lance. And just want to thank you and your staff for pulling this together. I think it's an opportunity for us to lead from the front. I don't think it's a persuasion or like a precedent. We would not be setting a precedent here or, or trying to persuade residents. I, I, I think it gives them options, right? That if they can't afford to water their grass, there are other options. Or if they want to help the environment, there are other options. I love the idea of direct grants. I may pretend not. Basically, I, I think that was just a suggestion, right? To families and businesses. We live in a desert. We live, you know, some say semi, semi-arid climate, I say desert, right? And that idea, this and much more, we should be doing as a city, any and everywhere. And it's hard to put, you know, I'm a big numbers guy myself from a dollar standpoint, but not everything comes down to dollars and cents. I think it's hard to put value, a, a value on mental health, for example, or on impact to the environment. This project will bring residents to our City Hall, which could have second order consequences, good ones, meaning, hey, if more people are around and enjoying the nature, enjoying the outdoors, maybe they'll come into these council meetings more and get more engaged. Maybe they'll trust the city more. You know, maybe there'll be other benefits that we can't put a dollar value on. But I do know that mental health is a huge issue in our city right now. And anything we can do to bring people out and connect them with nature and give them more avenues of just being outdoors and having some tranquility and some peace of mind, I think that's something we should do. So just wanted to say that it's a great project and I would be in full support. Thanks, bye. Thank you.
Oh, Counselor Seymour?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few comments, no questions. Thank you very much, Lance. Appreciate it. You know, I, I agree that, that this space is, could have something better to it. And, and even naturalizing it, I, I would be in-
Turf grass and other grass too, because we run an entire parks department where we have to be pretty skilled at what we're doing. And I have thought more than once, couldn't we just cut out four acres of sod? Have some sod company come in? They could pay us to cut out the sod, because sod is valuable material. And then we just put that into native grasses and wildflowers. We would have to mow it once a year, because grass needs an insult or a challenge. I doubt we're going to graze any creatures on it. So we would have to cut it once a year. But otherwise than that, we could just put it into that and let it be that way, as long as we had a good edge on. And we could do that all in-house, and it'll cost less more than a million dollars. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Yazadi?
Thank you, Mayor. Just have some comments on this project. I'm in full support of this project because of all the reasons that you've given, Lance. And just want to thank you and your staff for pulling this together. I think it's an opportunity for us to lead from the front. I don't think it's a persuasion or like a precedent. We would not be setting a precedent here or trying to persuade residents. I think it gives them options, right, that if they can't afford to water their grass, there are other options. Or if they want to help the environment, there are other options. I love the idea of direct grants from Mayor Protem. Basically, I think that was just suggesting, right, to families and businesses. We live in a desert. We live, you know, some say semi-arid climate, I say desert, right? And that idea, this, and much more, we should be doing as a city, any and everywhere. And it's hard to put, you know, I'm a big numbers guy myself from a dollar standpoint, but not everything comes down to dollars and cents. I think it's hard to put value, a value on mental health, for example, or on impact to the environment. This project will bring residents to our city hall, which could have second order consequences, good ones. Meaning, hey, if more people are around and enjoying the nature, enjoying the outdoors, maybe they'll come into these council meetings more and get more engaged. Maybe they'll trust the city more. You know, maybe there'll be other benefits that we can't put a dollar value on. But I do know that mental health is a huge issue in our city right now. And anything we can do to bring people out and connect them with nature and give them more avenues of just being outdoors and having some tranquility and some peace of mind, I think that's something we should do. So just wanted to say that it's a great project, and I would be in full support. Thanks, bye. Thank you.
Oh, Counselor Seymour?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few comments, no questions. Thank you very much, Lance. Appreciate it. You know, I agree that this space is, could have something better to it. And even naturalizing it, I would be in favor of that, just to give it a different look. It is just a wide open space. It is not, it's hard to activate no matter what. And I think it's, even if we do put something there, it still will not be as accessible as some of our other parks are. Limited parking, limited access, but I do not, I'm concerned about the total cost. I too was on council when we aligned these dollars, but we did not have line item veto for those. So I don't want to throw out the baby with the bathwater for one project. And, but I have concern of us, you know, anywhere from a million to $3 million project that I think would still have a hard time being activated. And so I'm willing to see things more specific, but I would not be, I would not be leaning towards the type of costs that we're talking about today. I appreciate that.
For me, I have problems with the total. But then when I look at still business needs in the midst of COVID, they're our backbone. And I shared with the city manager, to me, until things are exhausted for what they need, something like this, while it's nice, it's great to show off some things. The money, what happened last week? We have how many acres of grasslands for open space? And by the grace of God, we were spared that this city didn't burn up, because we don't maintain open space. We don't cut that grass. It's a tinderbox. And those kinds of things are real, are needed. And so I have a list of things that I think have to be done. And this, for me, is a nice thing, because we've got all of the great garden stores around. They'll help you, and they have demonstration areas. And they give me the local names, so I don't have to look up what the Latin name or whatever it is that they're trying to sell me. So I know what I'm asking for. So it's not I'm against it. I think it would be beautiful. But we have other needs right now. So that's what I struggle with. Anyone else? Oh, sorry. Counselor Numala?
Yeah, that's what I'm struggling with too, you know, the prioritization of this. And I do like this idea. I know that the city has been trying, and staff have been trying to improve that north side for many, many years and finding a creative way to do this. And I'm thinking about probably, and maybe this is part of the creative way to get it done, is to position this site as an educational opportunities that you can get grant funding to reduce the cost to the city to do this. So I would say, you know, if there is a, like, I would be supportive of it if there's a way where we can really reduce the cost and, you know, really be looking for other grant funding to match our, you know, our portion. And just to be really streamlined about it, but also I go back to, you know, who is this for? And just being really thoughtful about that community benefit that we're getting out of it and to actually plan it and program it well. So that's where I'm at on a big picture.
Mayor Protem?
Yeah, thank you. You know, I've kind of beat this up a little, but just some thinking, listening to the rest of council. I do like what we're trying to do. I just don't like spending this money on it. And so knowing that there is opportunity for grants and things like that, to be able to lead at the front, like Counselor Yazadi had mentioned, I think it's something that every council that I've been on, when we talk about conservancy, is I haven't heard a single council member say that we shouldn't be doing that when we talk about conserving if we're asking our residents to do it. I just think that there might be a better, more creative way to do a project like this that isn't these dollars that are so badly needed in other places, to me. I would be interested too, if, you know, if you continue to look at how we might do this project a different way. If, you know, if we end up shifting gears, which I don't know for sure that that's what we're doing. If we do, looking at like how we even work with like Westminster Public Schools and their STEM programs or even Front Range College, to see if there's opportunities where you are connecting students back to nature. You know, potentially having other funding sources through partnerships.
Yeah, they have, both of those places have horticultural schools. Did we totally leave you in there?
No, ma'am, I don't think so. I guess I would just leave with this comment if there's no other questions or anything. I don't think we're looking for a yes or no on this right this second, if at all possible. I think I would ask that you allow us to move this project forward to see what we come up with, what kind of costs we can dial in and see what an actual project cost might be. That's going to take us about three months. I understand, nothing that you said tonight, nothing's lost on me. I understand the importance of the funding and other uses for that funding. But I would at least ask if you could allow us to move this forward to see where we come, you know, what kind of costs we come up with, and what kind of other opportunities we have for funding and grants in the next two or three months. That would be a great benefit to us. And if you say, no, we're not going in that direction, we want to use this money for something else, and so be it. We'll continue on with the project with Western Resource Advocates and continue finding other non-essential turf areas to remove as we move forward with this project. So it's just one component of the project. And I think all I am asking for is just a little bit of grace to actually bring some really solid numbers back to you, just to evaluate it one more time.
Counselor Baker?
Okay, go ahead. Lindsey was there.
Go ahead, Lindsey. Go ahead, Counselor.
I just have a quick question. Since these dollars are already allocated, and Mr. Johnson, you mentioned that you'd like us to have time for staff to kind of finalize in detail what this project is. How does that move forward? I mean, since the dollars are already allocated, how, what are next steps? Would it ever come back to council for that official, don't move forward, move forward? Does that make sense? Like, I mean, the dollars are already there, right? We, in October, I believe, already allocated those dollars. So how would that come forward as far as an official yes or no?
I believe we would come back to council once we have construction documents and RFPs, and we have bid documents back and have those costs. We would come back to you to get your final approval, like we would for any other project. You know, money has been, it's just like CIP money already being allocated. Anytime we go to use those CIP funds, we come back to council, get your approval on that project. We would do the same thing with this project.
Got it. Thank you so much.
Counselor Baker?
Yes, I would advocate that we have closure of this thing tonight. I don't, I don't want it to hang in the thing. I think we should give clear direction, like the city manager, to end this program. There are more than enough reasons to end the program. If we want to revisit it six months from now, that's fine. But I think clear direction and guidance is needed for our staff to do their job.
Counselor Yazadi?
Just a quick comment and a question. I would advocate for at least to let them continue the work that they've been working on for, how long, Lance?
About six months now.
Six months worth of work to go away with no numbers and no facts that we don't have yet? Let them give us the facts. That's no harm in that. But the question I have is related to the funding, the ARPA funding, the other line items that are allocated. I know this question was asked on if it's committed or not. I think the answer was we can still recommit some of that or reallocate some of that funding. Can we actually do this formally? So can we get an agenda item where we look at the current allocation of whatever is not already used? So the uncommitted but allocated funding, if that makes sense? So that we can just go through it all at once? Because it sounds like there's a lot of other things that we should be relooking at if we are going to look at this, that we should look at the other things too.
Mayor Protem?
I think that the reason that this came back was the majority of council asked for it to come back. So I haven't heard the majority of council asking for the other things to come back. So I don't know, unless I hear three, you know, four people ask for that, I wouldn't advocate for that. And this was, being here before, that was the one area that there was rub. And the three people who are left are the, you know, the three that had rubbed with this particular issue. That's my two cents of, you know, whether or not we look at the rest of the ARPA funding. I guess my hesitancy to say I want this to stop is, it sounds like there's ways that this project could move forward without these dollars. And so I guess that's one thing that I would like to understand from you, Mr. Johnson. If we said, you know, is, if we totally defund this from those funds, does it completely kill your project? Or could there be, like I was saying earlier, in between, where we partially fund this and then move forward? Or what does that look like to you?
Yes, I believe, as you stated, there are other alternatives. We could go from a full-scale project to a much, much smaller project, depending on what funding we have. We always work within the funding we have, no matter what project we're working on. This project is no different. This project right now just has $1.75 million allocated to it. So if we get designs done and we go out to bid, we get our cost back, and we see it's a $5 million project, then we probably need to scale some things back and find where we're going to get that other money. If it comes in at five, half a million dollars, then I think that's something that's very viable if it's doing what we actually want it to do. So I mean, we just have to weigh that into balance, and I think that's why I'm asking for that extra time, so we can find those costs. I think truly, I believe staff would like this project to move forward. We also are very reasonable in fact, knowing that we have to have the funding to do it. If we have to go find other alternative sources of funding outside of other grants, then so be it. We'll look for those and see what we come up with. And if we can move that project forward using those other alternative sources, we will.
That makes sense. And I guess that's kind of where I'm hoping that there's some in-between, because I don't think that it's a bad project. I think it's a good project for reasons that every, again, every council I've been part of has wanted to show ways the public can be educated if they choose to go away from what is the norm, which is, you know, the Kentucky bluegrass. And I think that's, again, the leading from the front part. I just think that this, at this point in time, I'm uncomfortable with that big of a dollar amount. So I don't know if there's any appetite for the rest of council to say maybe a smaller amount, smaller scope of the project, because we also don't know how successful this is going to be. And it seems like we're kind of going grand scale for something that we're not sure, you know, we might end up with this beautiful thing out front of the city hall that nobody comes and walks by. Because I do have access concerns too, as far as this being the site. Because you, you know, you'd have to park over here and decide to walk over there. It's not like it's just in one of our parks that people are going to anyway. You know, it's not as accessible. So that's what I'm hoping for, is that there's some way that we could not kill the project, because I think there's, and to your point, that's just a small part of it. I'd like to see us figure out a way to do some of these educational components and showcase these different conserving ideas. But be able to have this money for other things that I think we could quickly spend to help the community. And I think that's what I've heard from some of my colleagues, especially around businesses and stuff that are struggling.
Counselor Numala?
I'd be supportive of staff going back and figuring out a way, yes, to spend less dollars, but utilize, you know, again, I think the creative approach to having this be educational and getting grants to support that. And I'm confident you guys can come back with a, with something that would cost less. So I would like to see that before we exit.
Counselor Seymour?
As I already mentioned too, to me, it's all about the cost and allocation of dollars responsibly currently. Always, always. And so I would rather, I wanted to try to give clear direction to staff. And I know this has got to be frustrating for staff. We've got council, we've got new ideas, so I get that. But I would rather, you know, if we're going to proceed under the same track, I would not be in favor of that. I would be absolutely in favor of what I mentioned before, and I think even Counselor Baker mentioned. But, you know, what's our minimalist? So, you know, I think that's a great example too, is what can we make this look like without spending that kind of money? So I'm not in favor of the current project moving forward. But if it gets four votes, then I'd like to also see what's the minimal when you come back, so.
Counselor Smith, have you, I don't remember if you've run in.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. I, along with kind of peppering from each of my colleagues, agree with Mayor Protem in that this is a good project. However, agreeing with Counselor Seymour is that it's, at its current rate, is not how I would like it to see in the long term. For, I know what constructing documents takes and putting together scope of work. And so I would like to see just itemizing, in more particular, detailing the scope of work and the total cost. I would like that to be done. Just more information for council. I would like that to come back formally and officially before council with those findings. But I agree with the project, but not in its current scope, if that makes sense. If it continues in that current scope, then I say, I agree with Counselor Seymour and say we can better allocate those dollars to something else. But with the understanding that things can change in finalizing the details. So if that makes any kind of sense.
What I hear is no, we have a majority that does not believe 1.75 million and/or plus should be used on this project. If there's other ways to get the money, go for it. And the money that we do not use has other places that can be used. And Mr. Baker, I know you would like to just flat out kill it.
Right, because that gives clear direction. That is understandable. And if, and if, I'm sure that with the staff so committed to this, they're going to find time in their workdays to come up with an alternative. And if, as I say, they want to bring that back to us four months from now, fine. I don't have any problem with that. We can revisit that. But I think we need to give them clear, clear direction now. And I think the best way is to terminate this.
Any further comments? Do you have any further questions? Do you have a clear vision?
Clear? Probably not. Cloudy. If, if you decide to reduce the funding or take it away completely, I think that's, if we're going to have a decision made tonight about that, if we are going to have any money of that 1.75, that would be great to know that. We will take whatever money you find reasonable to give to us for this project, and we will make a project work to the scale that we have the money to do it with. That's about all I can comment on that. I can't, if you just determine to take 1.75 million away from the project, so be it. We'll move on to something else. We'll continue with Western Resource Advocates, work on some small areas throughout the city. Take the information they can provide to us with their, with their resources and use that for future use. If you decide to give us half a million dollars, we'll take that and we'll put it to good use. I've brought many, many projects over my almost 29 years with the city, very large projects. We're good stewards of our money. We've done great things for the city. We will do that with this project, no matter how much money you give us.
Further direction for this young man?
Well, since we're not voting, since it's a study session, I would prefer not moving forward with the project.
Counselor Yazadi?
Is that an option to actually reduce the amount now, if we can agree to a number? Or are you and Counselor Baker a no on any number?
Well, since we're in study session, we can't take a formal vote on the number. It's just either proceed or not proceed at this point. That's my understanding of.
Couldn't we poll?
Well, we could just poll whether we, are you saying the dollar amount, or are you saying?
We can poll whether people want to pull it. We can poll whether there's a dollar amount. We can poll just because I know nobody wants to spend, the majority do not want to spend 1.75. They need to know what they can look at, if they're going to look at.
That would be fair to staff too. That would be fair to staff too.
I mean, would it be fair to make a recommendation of what that dollar amount is and see if it's somewhat comfortable? I mean, if we, we pull on the dollar amount, understanding some people would prefer nothing, but you could at least see if you have a majority that is favorable to it.
You want me to start guessing and we go from there?
I'm happy to make a number if that's appropriate. I just want to make sure that I'm doing what's appropriate.
Mayor, if I could, yeah, the purpose of a study session or one of the primary purposes is to provide staff with direction. And council can choose to do that through polling of, of possible options and direct us as Counselor Baker has suggested as clearly as possible tonight would, would be helpful. We can certainly work to a range on this project or a cap on, on, on capital contribution, for example. And if council just gave us a range or, or a general idea that there would, there may be support. What I would commit to as city manager is we wouldn't bring you back. The next step on this, in, in any event, would be to not bring you back a contract to approve. That we would come back again with, with the work. If council gave us a parameter, we'd work to that parameter and bring that back to you to look at first before anything happened after that. So the next movement wouldn't be a contract for approval or not approval. We would come back with an interim step to review if you did give us a guideline tonight on a, on a, on a capital cap or a capital range.
Well, and if we give them a parameter, they at least know what they can go after in a grant.
I would advocate that, that we don't spend any more than 400,000 of this money. And, and I do like the idea of putting a dollar number on it because then that allows Mr. Andrews to take that other money and figure out other ways for it to be spent while Mr. Johnson and his team look at how they could go after additional funds. But I wouldn't, I would want the cap to be 400 from this money so that that still leaves them open to be able to go find grants and such.
Counselor Numala?
I'd advocate for just a little bit more or some level of flexibility around that number. You know, just to see, you know, really to pull, you know, at least a million dollars off the 1.75. But just see what you could do with half a million or show us or plus or minus. If we gave them a range or something. Yeah.
Counselor Yuzadi?
I have a question. Are there specific limitations? So if we do find a million dollars, does, do those dollars have specific limitations for the aid? Do we know?
Thank you, Counselor. I believe to rephrase the question is, are there limits on how we could spend the ARPA funds if we didn't spend this amount or a portion of this amount on this project? I'd ask actually Mr. Dorr to comment on that. I, I have the, I have an answer, but I would like him to provide if he could.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Andrews. You know, at the time of council's appropriations and allocation, this was within the guidelines. We're continuing to get additional guidance from U.S. Treasury on the use. However, at this time, what council's already appropriated is, is allowable under the, the act. So, yes.
So i- if we wanted to use a million to give to businesses, for example, we would have to get that validated, verified somewhere, somehow, before we can make that call, right?
It would be, it would be prudent to have some more specifics, but obviously the Rescue Plan Act is, just as it's described, would, would be to help from the recovery. But I think we'd want to have some more specifics and have our team really look at the act relative to what council was contemplating.
Okay, thank you.
If I could give a little bit of history, Mr. Dork and, and Mr. Andrews can correct me if I'm wrong. Is that at the time on that meeting in November, council utilized ARPA funding that, which was allowed to backfill losses in sales tax revenue that we occurred during that time, which then by allocating that money towards that, then that freed up that 14 million for us to then allocate to these projects. So that's, I believe, where the flexibility came for the city at that point.
Counselor Yuzadi, do you have a thought about 400,000 or 500,000 for their cap?
I think 500,000 and we, and we have them give those alternatives. So 500 as the cap and we see what would be a 400, what they can do for 300 and so forth.
Counselor Seymour?
I'd, I'd be happy with, with the five to see where we're going. I mean, we just knocked 1.2 million dollars off of that, so I think we can allocate that.
Counselor Baker?
I'd like to remind the council that the 1.75 wasn't the true value of the project. The true value of the project was unknown. Could have been as low as 1.1, but it could have been as high as 3.3. So what would we buy for 400 or 500,000? So far, I don't think we've spent anything except staff time. We haven't hired planners to draw up plans, you know. To do all those kinds of things is a lot of work and is going to take someone a lot of work. And if we aren't committed to going forward in that. So of course, I'm again advocating for zero. But I'd also like to point out that if it costs $10,000 to zero escape, zero escape, zero escape a private home. Okay? For $400,000, we could give 40 people a grant to zero escape their home. And that would actually be a real world example that would be in the neighborhoods of our city. And I'd rather do that than have people spend time and imagination on thought on a project that will never implement. Thank you.
Counselor Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, my original thought on this, just my gut check was to cap it at 500,000. I think that makes appropriate sense. I don't know why it does. It just seems like a good number to, to cap this project at. And, you know, with all things said, I appreciate the discussion and appreciate the clarity warranted around this. I think that for this project in particular, I understand that, you know, we can maybe allocate some of these dollars towards private residences. But I also understand, I think Mayor Protem had mentioned that if we are trying to provide these grants, we should also be walking our talk. And I think that with allocating a cap of $500,000, we would have a good understanding and baseline as far as the grants moving forward on what it would take for a full project, a full scale project like this. How much grant dollars is appropriate for residents in the future? I think that this would set a good boundary and good parameters as far as what we would do in the future to help our residents make water wise decisions and activities within their own residence. So I am, I'm, I'm, I am in favor of approving a $500,000 cap on that.
Thank you. Counselor Numala?
I was just going to say, I really do like the idea of incentivizing other property owners to be able to, you know, redo their properties with, with zero escaping. So if that were to be, you know, I don't know, that could be what the other remaining funds could be used for to actually have a much, a much greater multiplying effect on being able to spread the wealth of this to the rest of the community. I actually had community members, when they saw this item, mention that they would love to see incentives or rebate or some type of program to be able to do that. So anyhow, I don't know how we would allocate the remaining funds, but I do like that idea.
Counselor, or Mayor Protem Demat?
Thank you. I'm, just since I threw out the 400 number, I'm happy to go to the 500, since that's a clear direction. I would say, kind of to understand what Counselor Baker's saying. But on the other hand, I feel like just you've heard a lot of the discussion of what we'd like to see happen. And I feel like you guys could get creative with that, that cap and said, knowing that this is a goal. So instead of going backwards where we're saying we got 1.75 to spend, you know, but it's almost the same thing except for you just have, true, this is what it's going to be, you know, figure out what to do with it. The other thing that I would advocate for as you move forward, as it sounds like you have clear direction, is, you know, how can you really utilize that space? Because I, I heard you say one of the big costs was generated by the irrigation system. So how could we do natural grass in a big portion of that where people aren't probably going to go? Not replace that, but maybe do some stuff around the edges where we're showcasing stuff. So I think there's a lot of creative ways that you could go about this in my mind, but I'm happy to go to the 500.
My cap was going to be 250, but I'm, I'm okay. But I love Mr. Baker's thought. We have six, we have six fire districts, right? Six houses, stations. So Mr. Counselor Yuzadi's place of saying, having it more in all over. I mean, if, I'm just, I'm not, I'm just sharing. I think it would be exciting to have a lottery and even have one from each of those six areas so people don't have to go far at all to see what it could be in their own area. I think it'd be cool. Anyway, do you now have direction?
I believe I have direction, yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, my only question on the next two is, do we want to do community engagement first? Since that's other staff members where the proposed city council rules and regulations is sort of us? So they don't have to stay late?
Mayor, I think we have staff for both items, so I think we can, we can go, keep going as the agenda is structured. I'm getting hand signals from Cody Herb to keep going.
Okay, so proposed amendments to city council rules and regulations.
Good evening, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Counselor Smith, you too?
Yes, thank you.
Wonderful. Hopefully this will be a speedy item. I have before you from, as a result of your conversations during the governance and team building retreat, the proposed edits that we heard during that meeting to both your code of conduct and your rules and regulations. I'm going to start just real quick for expediency with the code of conduct, the protocols document. We made a number of changes in that document to reflect the will of the city council. Those are found in blue typeface throughout the document. So in protocol, one, we acknowledge the response, that in a response you want, you want a response from the city manager that you received the email and that we're working on it. And then the second part to that, you've, you've all agreed to also let us know what the priority and the timeline is for the requests being made. So if that's captured okay here, we'll move on to the next one.
Mayor Protem?
So are you saying that we would give the, the expectation or you would? I think one of the things that I thought, I mentioned that would be helpful is just to hear back. We think we'd have that for you by Thursday, for example. And then if Thursday's coming up and you don't think you can hit it, just simply saying, hey, this, this isn't going to happen by Thursday. We, we need another couple of days. That way it just is kind of a touch base and we, you know, then I know not to bug you and know that it's just not off in dead air. Is that?
I think the intention of A, number one A, is that that will be included in the receipt of acknowledgement. And then always we'll follow up if more time is needed or a part of the answer can be exchanged and more to come. The second part was for you as a body to be able to tell amongst each other what the priority or the urgency was. So if you all are sending eight things and your request, Mayor Protem, has a little bit more urgency because it's on next week's agenda or a decision is coming, you would state that. Hey, can we prioritize this one over the other one that Counselor Numala sent? Because there's a more timeliness of that or need for that.
That makes sense. I guess my only question would be for city manager Andrews. Does this give you the leverage you need to be able to, if you know that that's going to push other things, to be able to pull council? Or, I mean, I would, that would be my expectation is if one of us, any of us had thrown something that's going to throw a wrench in, in the workings, that you would be able to pull back to council and say, is this a priority now or can we talk about this? And you know what I mean?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Protem, for the question. We, we haven't done that yet. We've tried our, we've tried our best to get to the, every question answered as, as quickly as we can. And I've tried to communicate in each response that we, that we are working on it and we'll get back shortly. And other ones are, are more instant. So if we ever got to that situation, I, we, I would feel comfortable communicating to you that this one is, is, is going to take a longer period of time. And I think in the, we have actually done that on some of the water rate work. We've indicated a very specific date based on some modeling work, for example, in that case where we would get back to you. And other times we, we just indicate that we'll get back to you as soon as we can with, with the answers.
Okay, that, that's good. I just, my intent of asking is making sure we don't have seven people driving you into the ground.
Any other comments? Counselor Yuzadi?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question here. Does number two basically mean that we should give you specific timing? So if I have a question, do I, like how? So my question is really how, how are we supposed to? What's the, what's the protocol for the language or for the way we go about this? For example, should I say, hey, Jody, can you give me X by this date or in three days? Or is that what we mean by expectations? Should we be specific?
Thank you for the question, Counselor. Where you can be specific, I think this is where, where this applies. And so oftentimes what's very, very helpful is when a counselor has a request and says that this is not urgent, next week is fine. Or this would really inform my decision making for Monday night's topic titled or agenda item following. In which case we always strive, if we get the question in time, to get you the answer by email in, on the Monday of the meeting. And in the worst case, as in tonight, we'll get the question to you at the dais from the podium. So that does help us a lot. If you tell us that it's okay, we can have this answer in a week or two. Or I want to synchronize it with this agenda item that's coming up. That's generally the most helpful.
So, so we can give you specifics, but we don't need to?
Correct, yes.
Like specific days?
That's correct, Counselor, thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Next.
Thank you. Protocol two was a very simple addition. You had asked through your discussion to identify the goal or desired outcome in a request for research. So four words, desired outcome or goal have been added to this protocol. Thank you. Number six was just adding the city manager to communications of general interest so that, that he's in the conversation when you're having that. Everyone's okay? Protocol seven, the only, there was a request to have clarification on this item and the city attorney and I worked together with the city clerk and noticed that the charter also has a similar expectation. So just including that in your protocol as a reference made sense. It does align with what's already there. If everyone's okay with that one. All right.
Sorry, quick question.
Counselor Yuzadi?
So I should just sit down? Clarification question here. If we ask you for simple information, but it's really a research topic, you'll tell us? I haven't seen that come up yet, but some things seem like they take much longer than three hours. But it's treated as simple information? So what's the line?
Generally, we were aware of how much it takes or if it's already somewhere where enough information is easy to piece together or it takes less time. So we're very clear, this will take this much time or we think this will take more than three hours. And then prioritize among staff to, if it's coming up on an agenda item or is part of something that's a big decision you're making and it makes sense that that's part of the work, then we continue along that path. So we make that determination, you know, sort of in our best practices and what we're familiar with. And if there's a question, city manager Andrews will let you know that that's going to take more research and we bring it to the council for that discussion and direction. I don't know that there have been any examples of that yet, but I know they have, there have been in the past.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you.
Direct line.
Thank you for that clarification and that is in fact the case. So if it's informing a council decision, we have very, very broadly interpreted that request to fall into our regular scope of work for you. And if it's, if it's outside of a decision that you're making, it's something you're contemplating to bring forward, but isn't an agendaized item or part of the city work program, that's when that research element would kick in. So if you asked us to research something that has just not been discussed by city council before and is something that you might be working on to bring to city council, that would, that would kick it in. But if it's part of, for example, your water deliberations, we've very broadly interpreted our mandate to provide that information for you, no matter what, what, what the amount of work is. And then if it is a long-term work item, then we will communicate to you that the expected delivery date for that information.
Thank you. Moved on to protocol number 10. This was just a specific addition that the planning commission staff liaison relate to the city council liaison when it is not appropriate for the counselor to attend that planning commission hearing because it would be XRT communication.
So being that that's in my stead right now, so what, what would that look like? Would I just plan on going to it unless you tell me? Or is it something where? I mean, because I'm trying to just think through that. Because we didn't used to do that. When I was very first on council, I was the liaison and I kind of went to all of them. And then I think there were some instances where we decided it was wise or not to go to them. So could you just kind of walk me through what you, how you envision that happening?
Jennifer and Rita and community development are very aware and work closely with Kristen Decker and others in the city attorney's office. So that conversation would happen internally between the members of staff. And then that recommendation would be made to you as the representative.
Okay.
Tonight's meeting is covering this. It's coming to you in the next few weeks or this may not be appropriate. So city attorney and combination with the planning team would make that call and then let you know.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
And then? I think we're done with that.
Oh, oh, we have one. So the extra item on this is that the city attorney's office has recommended removing protocol number 12. Doesn't align with the, the way the charters outline. The charter requests that members of council who are elected to their position participate and attend meetings. This gives an opportunity for an extended absence. The charter would supersede the major governing document. So to help make it easier and you thought best perhaps remove this one if you're okay with that.
I don't, I don't see a member of the city attorney's office, but I just want to at least understand because when this was added, when former Mayor Protem Maria DeCamara had went on maternity leave. And so the intent at the time was to make sure that in instances like that, that they were violating their duty. So how does, do we know how the, does the charter protect council members if they do have an extended absence?
By, I'm sorry. It does by offering the opportunity to ask for each instant to be excused. I would say the other thing that's a little bit different now is that there's a hybrid opportunity, right? So we have a member of council and members of staff who are unable to be here for whatever circumstances this evening and are still participating fully in the meeting. So there's, some changes have happened since Counselor DeCamara was.
And when I was on council before, we had a member that had some cancer treatments and we just kept excusing because we didn't have.
And that's what I recall too on Mayor Protem DeCamara's is council excused each time anyway. Had, had to do that formally.
Then I'm, I'm comfortable then. I just want to make sure because I remember that that was, is really the specific reason why they decided to add some.
And we modeled after the FMA. So yes, you are correct. So we'll remove that to prevent that confusion or potential conflict. If everybody's okay with that, I'll send a new version out later this week so that you have it for your record and in preparation for our next retreat.
Lindsay, I'm sorry, I haven't, are you, you okay with everything so far? Okay. Yeah, just yell at me.
I need her face there. The light's on her there. So we'll move on quickly to the rules and regulations document. This one also hopefully is pretty simple. There's three things where we'd like to seek a little bit more direction from you. But there are two changes that were made per the conversation during the retreat. So on page four, also in blue ink here on page four, the length of meeting adjournment has been removed entirely. See no objections?
You see praises?
All right. And then on page number six, the opportunity for city council to bring a matter before city council and have that agendized has been added back into the meeting. It's specifically for city council. The last version was a little bit more broad. We thought thus captured what you were looking for. If this is acceptable for everybody. Okay. And then the three items where we're seeking some more direction. I'm sorry, I think it's two. Oh, no, three, because I had one that didn't get added. On appendix C, this is specific to, I believe it was Counselor Smith had asked for emails to be read when we're in a purely virtual meeting. And the staff is happy to look into that. We can talk more about it. But one of the questions we had was how would we do that? We get in the timing of, right? So if an email is longer than five minutes and speed of reading and that sort of thing. And then it's almost like it's in public record two times, once written and then also verbally by a member, someone reading the email. Did we want to continue to pursue that? And what would you like staff to bring back to help inform that?
Mayor Protem?
I have an additional concern too on this. And it's not the reading of the email, but it's actually the getting, people getting more than one bite at the apple. And so I don't know how we control that, but I think that both in, in our quasi judicial as well as in our public comment, that it's unfair if people game the system, so to speak, by realizing they can, email's not as, unless we're going to read them. Email to me, I mean, people send us email all the time. The fact that it gets agendized, I'm comfortable with that. But if they're being able to leave a voicemail and then also come and speak publicly, I don't, in my opinion, that's, you're getting 10 minutes, not five minutes. If you were going to read them, then you know, you potentially get 15 minutes. So I think that if, whether or not they read them or not, I think is a different topic unless you decide to read them. But I do think that people should be truly limited to their five minutes and they should get to choose which ones, which of you. And this may be input from the clerk's office to figure out like how you potentially would track those. But, but I mean, people are, do have to say who they are and some sort of identifier, public comment. But I wanted to bring that up as part of this discussion because I think that we need to address it.
Counselor Smith, since you requested it.
Thank you. Yes, I, well, I agree with Mayor Protem. I think you can, I think you can kind of script the system now that we have a hybrid option as far as emailing and coming in public. The main reason, and we can cut this entirely, now that we do have a main hybrid option for our constituents, my primary concern was that in the beginning of the pandemic, in an emergency situation, is that no public comment was being heard. It was only an email to city council. And that was my primary purpose of bringing this up as far as hearing as a voice record, what the public is saying. Because let's be honest, no one goes and reads our packets in full. And so at that point, we had heard at least, I want to say a handful, at a minimum, of people coming to every council meeting and saying their thoughts and feelings. And at that point, we had no opportunity for anyone to do that. No voicemail options, no calling it, no nothing. And so I think now that we have that as an opportunity for a live call in and voicemail and email, I'm, I'm willing to remove this from our protocols list because it doesn't make sense anymore, right? I just wanted, I just wanted to put a provision in there if we were to ever go back to pre where we are now, where we don't have all those options that we have that in there. But taking a snapshot of where we are now, I'm fine with removing that provision.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Counselor Nubella?
Well, if it's a moot point.
Okay.
Staff will work to find ways to work through the duplicative comments. So we'll, city clerk's office and city attorney's. The other item related to hybrid meetings is that the appendices are very specific as to go to meeting and the login. Will, or would it be acceptable for us to change that to more generic terms in case we already changed platforms or use a different sort of?
I'd say yes, and I'd be open to a different platform.
And then city clerk, Bitch, can you help me with the, or if one of the city attorneys is on? We wanted to talk about the statements read by the chair of the meeting at the onset of public hearings, at land use and non-land use hearings. This was connected to the recent public hearing and I, the note got lost in the memo.
I believe Kristen Decker is on the line. I do, I can answer it, but I do think that she'd probably do a better job than I would. So Kristen, if you're still there, could you unmute and address this question?
Yes, I am here. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Oh, good. So the question, I sort of missed the beginning of the question. When Cody's speaking, it kind of goes in and out. It has something to do with the land use statement and the non-land use statement?
Correct.
And, and what is, what was the question? Sorry.
It says clarifying that the staff lays onto the, or no, that's the wrong one.
It says staff also seeks direction related to the statements that may be read by the chair at the onset of public hearings for both land use and non-land use public hearings. Part seven miscellaneous 22 and 23. It's the script that the mayor or chair reads at the beginning.
Right. I guess I'm still not quite understanding. I apologize. Is there revised statements?
I don't have a revised statement. I was looking to see if there, that's in the agenda memo. So I wanted to make sure that it wasn't missed if there was something we were recommending or requesting from city.
Mayor Protem?
Did, in our discussion, because you did actually change it some for this last one. And then when Mayor McNally came back to team here, she had recommended looking back at old versions. And I think they did that. But could this be a layover from the fact that we made some changes in this most recent one?
City clerk?
So we did make some changes in this most recent one for a couple of reasons. Number one, because the applicant was addressing more than one parcel and we wanted to make it clear to the public that they, they were getting more time because of that. The other reason is that we, it, we've not had a lot of public land use hearings in the past couple of years. And so we wanted to make sure that people were comfortable with the parameters around the public hearing. So we looked at very old scripts and then we looked at new scripts. And I worked with the city attorney's office and worked with Mayor McNally to incorporate rules and.
Protocols of how we were going to handle.
To make sure that we could hold a civilized and efficient public hearing.
Right.
I guess the only thing from my perspective, because I think it worked very well. The only thing that I don't know if it's worth spelling out, and this is probably a question for the city attorney's office, was there were times where I think the mayor wanted to let people finish their thoughts. And I think that that's kind of standard. So if you're not, you know, there's some discretion to the chair. And so just making sure that that's spelled out as, you know, as whatever the legal guidelines needs to be so that people understand that you have some leverage as the chair.
Well, and I have the clock here. And so when they got to 30 seconds over, I then spoke up to get them to, it was their time was up. And I did that no matter which side of the aisle they were on.
Yeah, but it was very evenly done. I didn't know if that was something that we should spell out that, that the chair, whoever it is had the time.
I do think it's, this is Kristen. I do think it is covered under the rules and regs where the mayor has that discretion to run the meeting. But if you would like to spell it out, we could, we could draft something out for you.
Only if you think it's needed.
I know we had quite a few comments about that, that some people had extra time to speak and others didn't.
That's because they didn't listen to the opening.
I think, right. I, I think we're hard, but if, if council desires more specificity, we could do that.
No, it just tells me next time, if there is a next time for something that complicated, that they had three different issues, they had used 30 to 35 minutes at planning commission. We needed to hear the same thing. And we gave, I mean, I can justify it till I die. They had to present what they presented at the first meeting. So they went 30 or 35 minutes and people were given five minutes and staff took whatever time they needed. And that's what we have to do to be able to make decisions.
Then we'll leave that section as is. And always if there's a need to update it, we will. And of course, the clerk's office and the city attorneys will update script as needed for those instances. Are there any other?
And Cody?
Yes, ma'am.
We, Dave and I and Abby did also, as she said, we've worked extensively on the mayor's comments for Uplands. So we can look at that language that we put together for that and make sure that the language in the protocols are, are consistent.
Thank you. Are there any other changes or items you'd like to see us staff review or add to these documents?
Mayor Protem? Anyone? Thank you.
Thank you. Have a nice evening.
You too.
Oh, Mayor, I have something for council.
I didn't see you waving.
No, you're fine. You know, as part of, if we're, it seems like we're kind of all okay with these protocols. So in effort for discussion and to follow these protocols, I would like to call an executive session for next Monday. As a personnel matter, to have a discussion with our city interim city manager, to go over council expectations, to make sure that we are setting the right parameters for our employee. And for staff, I think it's appropriate, I've been calling for it for a while, even before this new council. I think it's appropriate for our city interim city manager to have a good understanding as far as what to follow, how to pivot, what to expect from city council. I feel like we've asked our interim city manager to take the reins and hold steady until we find a, a permanent city manager. And I feel like we haven't yet done that. I feel like we are pivoting, which is completely within our wheelhouse as far as how we are directing and running our city. But I think that it's appropriate that we sit down as a personnel matter with our city manager to go over just exactly in more clarity what we need to be chasing and what our expectation is on that chase, what we're asking to chase and asking to follow through. So I'm hoping to have some backing from our city, from my colleagues for a executive session next, next Monday.
I will poll people. Counselor Baker? Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Mayor Protem? Counselor Nubella?
Counselor Zadi?
Okay, you got it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, proposed 2022 City of Westminster communicate, community engagement strategy.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and city counselors. I'm Ryan Hegrenis, Innovation and Communication Manager. We appreciate the opportunity this evening to receive feedback on a draft community engagement strategy. We appreciate the opportunity this evening to receive feedback on a draft community engagement strategy. Many of you took time in the last month or two to provide input to our team regarding communication and community engagement. We value that guidance that you was provided as we head into the new year. The draft plan presented this evening is built on your input as well as best practices in local government. In a moment, Community Engagement Liaison Kit Redmer will walk you through a brief presentation on the proposed plan. Mr. Redmer recently joined the City of Westminster and we're thrilled after an extended vacancy to have a position dedicated to this important work. The plan before you is more robust, a more robust plan than we've had in many years and is more comprehensive in terms of diversifying our approach and improving access. This is a six-month plan because we want to listen and evaluate our efforts in the months ahead and make necessary adjustments to improve our engagement moving forward. Ultimately, this is your plan and we want to ensure that it reflects your desires to listen to our community and better connect with those we serve. At this time, Mr. Redmer will present the draft plan and the philosophy behind it. We look forward to turning your input into action. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, Councilors, and Happy New Year. As Mr. Hegrenis mentioned, I'm here this evening to present our draft community engagement strategy for the first six months of 2022. In this strategy that you see in your packets, our goal essentially is to help you reach out to the awesome mix of people in Westminster or the people that, people that own businesses in Westminster, help build trust with them, to get them involved with the city and to listen to their ideas. As Mr. Hegrenis mentioned, we very much view this process as a work in progress that we will continue to refine and evolve over time. And so we appreciate your feedback both now as well as along the way. Most importantly, as you mentioned, this is your plan. So please let us know if you have suggestions or, or changes that we should make in our approach. Next slide, Curtis, please. Actually, sorry, you're, you're on the right side. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm a recovering State Department type. I've spent most of my career up to this point working with governments around the world, many of whom were at least a bit unsavory. Many of these governments were predatory or self-serving and the level of trust between government and the people was, was often nonexistent, which led to an inability for the governments to actually be able to solve problems that they were facing.
Bless you.
Bless you, sir. As a result, citizen democracy in these places often, we found, was, was also stunted and, and government was largely ineffective. Please note, I'm not comparing you to those governments. But I, I mentioned that just so you know, that I tend to look at community engagement from more of a big picture perspective. As you know, an intentional, well-designed community engagement program can build trust between government and the governed. On a more basic level, it can help us invigorate our citizen democracy. And I mentioned that just so you know, we take this very seriously and it's really important to us. As this slide points out, faith in government has been declining over the last 20 to 30 years, as well as in the United States, along with the world. And much of the research I've seen regarding the public, related to public trust with local government mirrors this slide, although, as you might imagine, it's slightly less pronounced and subject to some local variation. Next slide, please. Just to quickly touch on a study that was done by Pew Research Center in 2019 on trust and distrust in the United States. They, they found some really interesting things. And, and one of the things that they found is that levels of trust in public institutions is directly related to income, age and ethnicity. So I take that to mean that according, according to the study, if you're less affluent, younger and more diverse, you tend to trust less in government, just as, as statistically. So to me, I'm speaking for myself, it means that we need to really bring a diverse range of voices and opinions into our engagements with the city if we want to move the needle as far as public trust. So it's not just a nice to have, it's, it's, it's vital if we want to build public trust in our community. The other interesting point I found from the Pew study is that public distrust in government is largely based on the view that people actually might not know much about what we do in government. And so to the extent we can pull the curtain back and show them and bring them along with how you make policy and decide, make decisions in our, in our community, that can also help build trust. End on a positive note, at least end the slide on a positive note. Americans are eternal optimists. Eighty-six percent of the respondents in the Pew study did believe that the situation regarding public trust might improve in the future. So at least there's some hope. Next slide, please. So ladies and gentlemen, to cut to the chase, we've put together a list of activities and initiatives that we'd like to implement over the next six months with your approval. Essentially do one of three things, one or more of three things. First and foremost, we'd like to listen better to our community and understand their nuanced views of issues of importance. And this includes, from a staff perspective, doing a better job of reporting to you what we're hearing as far as those views. So you can feed that into your decision-making process. Second, we'd like to do a better job of informing our community of the issues that you're working on and deciding. And we'd also like to provide more outlets for our community members to get involved in active and city and council organized events and activities. All different types of things, fun, fun events, events that kids can participate in so that, so that we can bring as many people to the mix as possible. So for every activity that we tee up for your consideration, we start out by thinking about what's the purpose of the activity? Is it primarily to listen, to inform, to involve, or maybe a mix of, of the three? Depending on that answer, then we ask ourselves, what's the most effective way to reach people and measure our impact? Next slide, please. In crafting this strategy, we also made some assumptions about what we think is most likely to work in terms of community engagement. Of course, we, we welcome your feedback on this for sure. First and foremost, we're thinking that it would be good if we made it as easy as possible for people to connect with us. So we know, of course, doesn't, we don't need to say that people right now are really busy with life. And we know it's not feasible for everybody to come to a city council meeting. So we've looked at doing a whole range of different things. Different types of activities, both in-person and virtual, you know, streaming on as many platforms as we can, increasing our reach and accessibility when it comes to our streaming services. Things like providing city services and amenities as incentives for people to participate, providing childcare services when possible, as well as working with local stakeholders as well, so that we can start bringing the city to people as well, in addition to asking people to come here to City Hall. Also, we want to invest a significant amount of time and effort in the next six months in understanding a little better what people do really care about and so that we can focus on engaging on those issues. And so this means, and we'll talk about this in a minute, maybe setting up a listening tour for city council, if you're interested in doing that. It also could mean taking advantage of our biennial community survey and carefully crafting that survey so that we ask the right questions. But also think, we're thinking about a digitally targeted survey, perhaps pertaining to water, where we can, we can ask some good questions and, and, and really seek to understand what people are thinking about that topic. And then, of course, we take very seriously our responsibility to feed that information back to you in a digestible format. And then we plan to review the data that we get and take a critical eye to all of these different things so that we can understand better if we're actually succeeding in reaching people or not. Next slide, please. In terms of some concrete examples, I've mentioned some of them already, but, you know, in terms of listening, we, we would like to set up a listening tour if you're interested. This, with your approval, this could be held in different parts of the city, perhaps in collaboration with community organizations or HOAs. And we all, we mentioned the surveys and another part of listening too is, is improving our public feedback processing and reporting. So, so doing a better job of, of keeping track of public comment and looking for trends and being able to read and data mine and extrapolate key issues and reporting those back to you. On the informing front, we've mentioned this to some of you in, in some of our meetings, but we're very int, we're very excited actually about our current project upgrade, our capability to broadcast and stream city council meetings, as well as other activities, not just, not just meetings, but activities outside of City Hall as well on Channel Eight, as well as across a variety of different social media platforms and on our website as well. We think this is really important. Our goal is to include translation and closed captioning services to be able to reach out to more people. And as you know, each social media platform has a certain demographic that they specialize in. So the more platforms we're on, the more different types of people we'll be able to reach, in theory at least. And so Ryan is working really hard on that and that's something we're very excited about. In terms of informing, we're also proposing perhaps setting up a video blog where one or several of you could maybe take a few minutes and sit down and just talk to us about an issue that you care about. And it wouldn't be live streamed, it would just be recorded. It's something that we could, we could post on social media as well as our website. And again, there's no requirement to do that, just if you're interested in doing that. And finally, in terms of involving our community, we are proposing a range of activities ranging from a utility open house at the water treatment plant, as well as potentially organizing a diverse community utility advisory council. That would be a standing body that could advise us on water, water issues in the community. And that would be a geographically and demographically diverse body, if, again, if you approve. Next slide, please. And so just to provide you a concrete example of what this notional calendar looks like right now, it's, and it's very notional. You can take a look at some of the activities that we were thinking about for January and February. Again, this run, this currently runs through June. And you'll notice there are a lot of TBDs next to the activities. And that's because we want to understand, make sure that we know that you approve in concept some of these ideas. If you do, then we'll go, we'll get started right away to try to set some of these up and, and get some, you know, confirmed times and dates and partners that we can work with and then come back to you with a more detailed calendar. Of course, we're not expecting everybody to attend every, every event either, but we'd like to provide you a nice portfolio of options that you can look at. Next slide, please. This is essentially the last slide. And then taking, as I mentioned earlier, but taking a hard look at what we're doing and, and, and asking ourselves if it's working in terms of bringing, not just bringing numbers to events, but again, different types of people from different parts of the city is something that we'd really like to do. And so taking note of and reporting on our metrics is very important to us. In the past, we've, we've based a lot of our metrics on audience size, you know, which is important, but that's just one factor to take a look at. And so we'd like to look at things like demographic makeup as well, home zip codes of participants and, and many other things too. If you're talking about virtual activities, we can look at the, not just the number of viewers, but the numbers of minutes watched. So we're, we can tell if people are actually tuning in and staying, or if they're just checking us out for a minute and then leaving. And then it's not on the slide, but I, I wanted to mention too that there are other communities, even in our area, that are doing great things in community engagement. We know that. Colorado's a leader when it comes to local government engagement. And so we're always looking for best practices in other communities and, and looking for ways that we can learn from other cities and, and what they're doing as well. And so that's an important part of the plan as well. So next slide, please. Thank you very much on a long evening for your, for your attention and we welcome your questions and feedback. Thank you.
Counselor Seymour?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for bringing this forward to us. I, I do have some, uh, great, great to see top of the scales listening. I think we've all talked about these in the individual meetings. And that, that's critical, going to our residents to say, what do you want? It's as simple as that. And then us as a group shutting up. I, I found a presentation, if you talk about best practices, and I've talked about this before too, because I thought it was fabulous, is City of Wheat Ridge has done a, a great job in that they made a presentation at CML. They stole some stuff from Lakewood too. So that's always the best thing is to skill, you know, steal better practices from people. But they do a great job in community engagement in small scales. Found that when they just ask, what do you want, not what we have for you. You know, it's the old adage, we're here from the government to help. Yeah. And so it, it was also a great way to capture emails and to make specific feedback to those residents too. And they've built an amazing email database of people who really want to help and be engaged in the city. And they, they drive that by areas. And so great. Get engagement in the HOAs. You know, we have a lot of engaged people in HOAs. We have a lot of civic organizations. We have, you know, loose knit organizations like the Heart of Westminster Group. It does a great job communicating. So I see all those as great things. Our biannual survey, I'm, I'm always concerned now that I've learned a great deal about that, is tweaking that too much because we have some historic items on there that we can track our performance. So I want to be careful that we don't tweak that too much. So we miss out on those, those metrics that we have been getting over the time that says, you know, what's our trust? I've been pushing hard on Channel Eight, even though I'm not a, a subscriber to Comcast, but it is a way that many of our residents get information. And if, I understand too, that right now we can't even get the parts to fix it, but you know, we're moving towards that. So thank you for that. Every way, all ways that we can reach. And then translate, close caption, all of those things are available. The technology is there. So we should be pushing it out. If, if the pandemic didn't teach us anything, it taught us that we can reach people in all kinds of ways and, and track those metrics. So thank you for all that. That's all my positive stuff. A few things that I, I have concerns about. I'm deeply concerned about another water survey. This council is now the water surveyed. The answer has been given by our residents, I believe. That also ties along with the separate water board. I have concerns about that. And the citizens advisory board. We, we have a great deal of standing boards already that, that give us our feedback. I, I, I have a concern about, I mean, we always need as many voices as possible, but the boards we do have are already in place, you know, for us to hear from. And so I, I have a concern, a concern about that. So those are my thoughts. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor Protem Dama?
Thank you, Mayor. A lot of the same of what you just heard from Counselor Seymour as far as my, my likes and dislikes here. Add some context though to my thinking. I think the listening tours are, are vital. I think that that absolutely needs to happen. In the past, the, when you talk about the video blogs, I think that those are good opportunities that we used to do as a city even prior to, I mean, back to Mayor McNally's time prior on council, that their council would do little video shorts of things that people could participate in. And when I think about education opportunities around conservancy, I think that there are programs that we've done in the past that kind of dropped off. The mayor and I actually were having a specific conversation around the water conservancy education that they used to do at different events and stuff. And they had, you know, was it Captain Komod you called it? That, that would go and educate people. And, and I, and I think about that and having a longstanding education program is important because the turnover you see in a community like Westminster. And when you talk about like, what's the proper way to water your lawn? How many days should you water your lawn? Those are things that new homeowners or people coming from other climates across the United States might not know, you know, what the proper way to care for that is when they, they come here. And I mean, we certainly have seen huge amounts of turnover in our, you know, countryside being one of those neighborhoods where you see, a lot of what I've seen in my lifetime growing up in that, that community is you've seen new residents come in as, you know, as we aged out and moved to apartments, potentially in the city or out of the city, but then a lot of us came back. So you kind of have this in-between group that, and then that, you know, you just have this cycle in, in suburb communities. And I think it's a miss, long-term miss, that some of those things didn't survive from a council to council or staff to staff. So whatever we put in place, I think it's a good moment to think like, how does this program live beyond this council, this communications team? So, you know, that, that we're not losing those education opportunities. When we talk about the, I, I really am against the Water Steering Committee, not because of the intent. I just think the citizens have spoken pretty loudly. I think that there, we do need to figure out as a council how we encompass both sides of the conversation in a way where we're trying to meet each other in the middle. I mean, I won't even say it's in the middle because I think it's been overwhelmingly stated a certain way by the electorate. But there is obviously people that don't, we don't want to leave behind as a council and making sure that we have as many voices advocated for as we can. Understanding that not everybody's going to get what they want in, in any conversation. So I would be interested in, in, you know, you guys providing back what you already have, but I'm not looking for another data point collected. Same with the citizen advisory board, but I, I do think that there's opportunity. Same with the citizen advisory board, but I, I do think that there's opportunity potentially for the communications team to work with what we already have. To extrapolate on what my concerns are, on top of what Counselor Seymour said, it's not that we just already have these boards, it's that we're not filling them. At least not at the rate. Like, we, I think we're full right now, but the amount of people who are asking to participate in those boards has shrunk substantially in the, you know, four-plus years that I've been on council, where, you know, you usually, we used to have to actually sit for a couple hours figuring out, you know, who out of these great candidates are we going to let on, on a board? Now it's kind of like, you know, where do we best fit these people that barely fit the slots that we have? So trying to figure out how we make sure that those opportunities are communicated to the, to the residents is one area that I think that we could do better. But also, you know, how can we make sure that things are getting back to the whole council? Um, you know, being liaison to those boards, I think, is part of it, but sometimes, you know, things are missed in the, you know, making sure that everything heard from both the council liaison and the staff liaison is reported back to the whole group in a way that, um, you know, everybody feels like they're there. Sometimes you have council members that are really good at it. Counselor Smith is great at taking notes, I suck at it. So I'm, I'm committing to memory when I bring things back, the thing that stuck out the most to me at a meeting. So trying to figure out, you know, a, a good way to make sure that we are best utilizing those, those groups. And on that note, and this is just something more for my colleagues and for you guys, I think as we go into strategic planning, you know, we do have a task to figure out how we want to tie our boards and commissions into what our strategic plan for this council is going to be moving forward in a way that they have, you know, we heard a lot tonight about making sure we give staff clear direction. I think we have the same responsibility to our boards and commissions, a little less for the ones that are quasi-judicial because they, they have their legal obligation, but things like the inclusivity board, the environmental advisory board, even the historic landmark board, you know, there are things that we can help guide them to make sure that, you know, all, all, we're all rowing in the same direction. But I certainly am, I'm excited to get back to listening tours and going out and doing town halls. That's something that we haven't got to do in the last couple of years. I don't even think that Counselor Smith and Seymour have really got to do much of those because COVID started shortly after they, they joined the team, so I'm, I am excited about those efforts, but thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Counselor Numela?
Great. Thank you. I know I had questions before, I just, I, I did not get a chance to review the answers that you sent, so I apologize. So do you mind if I just, I'll just go through them, but also we'll kind of address some of the comments that my colleagues have mentioned before. One of the questions that I had from the start was, we mentioned we would be determining whether childcare is provided, and so overall, um, I suppose it would be helpful to have some clarity around when we provide childcare and translation services, and I feel like, being in this industry quite a bit, you know, we have this, you know, for translation services or for childcare, we're like, oh, just tell us if you need it, but, um, I don't think that's overly accessible or helpful or understood. So, uh, yeah, I'm curious to know what your thinking is on that.
I can certainly share my thoughts, and I defer to my colleagues if you guys have thoughts as well, but, uh, my, my recommendation would be to use it as often as possible and to have it there, that's available for, for the, the community members that come to our events. You know, it's, it's possible to set up an interpreter in the corner of a room and maybe sit with a couple tables. It doesn't mean you have to go, you know, full monty and, and do the entire presentation in Spanish or, or another language. And so my recommendation, because I, I know, I was thinking when I saw your question, ma'am, about, you know, what would be the threshold that we would use translation, and I think maybe don't even worry so much about that, just have it available, and so we can address people's needs when they, when they're, when they're there. That would be my answer.
And, and you got some of my other comments, like, I'd love to see us utilize local businesses and, you know, where, if we are in trying to capture more underrepresented populations or more diverse populations, that we actually utilize businesses in the area that they would enjoy seeing represented. Sometimes it's, uh, you feel more comfortable when you feel like you're, like you see yourself. So, um, just a suggestion there. I should start off by saying this is a great start, and I really appreciate the time that you've spent listening to everybody and trying to respond with a, an approach here. So I just want to say that. I would say that the, um, the coffee roundtables with stakeholder organizations, um, I'm just being, again, sensitive to what organizations are those, and are those in alignment with our underlying goal of trying to hear from everybody, but also kind of pressing on the people that we don't typically hear from. So, um, to be, um, identifying those organizations in a way that's, again, in alignment with our goals, and to be clear about what our goals are. So, um, I mentioned on that note, when, when will we actually have the measures established for the outreach we'll be doing? Because instead of just diving in, it would be good to be able to say, okay, we're collecting this particular demographic information, we want to see more renters represented, so we're going to collect, you know, housing status as part of it. So just, you know, being clear about what our goals are, and then therefore what information we're collecting.
Yes, ma'am. So the short answer to your question is, we would like to build the metrics into the design of the, of the activity, or right from the outset. Think about, like, like you just said, I mean, who are we trying to attract? I mean, our events will be open to all, of course, and all are welcome, but trying to develop some of those metrics from the outset and, and have them clearly established and clear. Again, they might change over time, but, but having them from the outset, I, we think is very important.
Regarding metrics, historically, my understanding and my experience in recent years is that's largely just been a, how many people attended or how many people called in. We'd like to go a step deeper and be able to compare, as Kit mentioned, one of those metrics being demographics, and is the make, the makeup of people engaging in different facets of this plan. How does that match with our overall makeup as a community, and how do we continually strive to improve that? Beyond that, though, if there are particular metrics that you as a council are interested in, we want to make sure that we capture that now so that we can plan that as we start. So if there's anything in particular, you mentioned housing status or things like that that you as a council think would be important for you to know, I think we'll have a lot more data than we've had in the past, but we want to make sure that that's useful information. So that would be input that would be helpful tonight.
Yeah. I mean, I'll state mine, I'm sure others can add to it, but just, you know, you mentioned earlier the, um, the lack of trust in younger, more diverse, um, popular, and lower income populations. So immediately, those, income, age, ethnicity, and again, you know, I think ownership versus rental, um, those would be key for me. And it doesn't, you know, it, there's five questions, right? Keep it simple, because otherwise people get turned off by it, and then have it as sort of an intercept type of, you know, when somebody's RSVPing or something, and I know you can't capture it everywhere, but to the extent you can, it would be great to have those things reported on in the summer so we know, you know, how, how are we doing?
Absolutely. Are there any other, uh, any other things you'd like us to capture in, in a sort of simple survey? Again, we wouldn't force that on anyone to, you know, it's required for participation, but to the extent they're willing to share that with us, we would try to collect that at every opportunity we have. I'm, just two thoughts on that. One, this may be my, my own biases, but the more you ask me, the less I'm going to trust you. I'm going to be like, well, what do you want my data for? Because I understand how data mining works. I'm being an IT and working for sales marketing companies, I'm, I like people having my data. So I would, I would want to at least, and I don't know how you then collect data, but I think we should at least be conscious of that, that being a thing that, that you're fighting against. Um, the other thing that, um, just as a thought, because, you know, I, I do want to be as equitable as possible to make you sure you're getting them more voices, so understanding we want to have renters and, you know, low income versus high income, we want everybody at the table who lives in the city. So I wouldn't want to inadvertently skew what kind of feedback we're getting because we're trying to get a demographic in that we feel like we haven't heard from in the past. And the, the one thing, though, I would think would be, you know, so those are just some things that I think you're going to have to figure out how to battle through. But as far as like a data point that I think would be interesting is, is this your first meeting? You know, is this your second outreach meeting? Because I think one thing that I've certainly seen in sitting through a lot of those meetings prior to being on council and since being on council, get a lot of the same voices. Get a lot, you do get a lot of the people from boards and commissions traditionally, who we probably have heard from before, but it's kind of a metric that tells you whether or not we're, we're expanding or not. And obviously, that's going to, you know, go over time. For me, as a council person, it's kind of been more finger in the wind, I know that person, I know that person, you know, I've at least seen that person at several of these, but I'm trying to figure out a way for us to gauge our success in attracting new people, I think is a metric I'd be interested in.
I like that, and we can certainly add that. And I think to your, your other comment about people's willingness to, to share that information from past experience, I think if we separate that demographic information from personal information, if we're asking you for your email address, we're not asking that in the same place. We want to know collectively that who was represented at that meeting. I don't need to necessarily know what, and, or want to know what an individual's income or homeownership status is. So I think we can look at ways to separate that and make that more comfortable.
I just know at, at the food bank at Tri-City twice a month, well, now it's been every week, but the rule is, we just need your name and how many in your household, because they weren't coming for the food bank thinking we were collecting more. And so once they trusted that's all we needed and anybody could come, it didn't matter which county you were from, you didn't even have to be in Adams or Jeffco. If you were in something else and, and found us, they could come. But people question why you're collecting stuff. Anybody else on that question? Otherwise, go ahead, Ms. Oh, sorry. I think he's just got it on, he's in line.
All right.
And people can add. People can add as we're going.
Yeah. Um, thank you for that question. And regarding just how we're doing, you know, when we're evaluating ourselves over the summer, I would hope that we would have a growth mindset of just, you know, if something's not working that well, okay, you know, do we, we don't toss it out, out the window, but we think about, you know, is it just going to take time? Just like your point about building trust. So, you know, six months is a short timeframe.
Good point, thank you.
With the Water Steering Committee Advisory Board, or whatever we're calling it, I do tend to agree with Councilmember Seymour in particular about just the utility of a board. But I do feel like, when I was out talking to folks, people do want to be a part of the solution. And so to your point of getting people more bought in and engaging, I think that having some type of, uh, more of a workshop and by, you know, some sort of very short steering committee stint that could help inform us on, um, the decisions that we're going to be making over the next six months on water, that it would be great to have a venue where we could hear from a very diverse and representative portion of our community, say, well, how, you know, what, what do we, what do we not know? What, what are the sensitivities that you have so that we can make the very best decision for the community based on whatever we've all heard already, but also, again, making sure, like crossing our Ts and dotting our Is on making sure we're truly hearing from the need of the community. And with that, on this, on this digital water survey, I heard a lot of criticism with the first survey that was put out, particularly around how it was worded, and wording questions is so hard, and that's why professionals do it versus staff. And so I'm not opposed to having a survey because we do know that, what, only 20% of our electorate actually votes. And, uh, I think that there are people that don't even, you know, that aren't, that we have not engaged fully and that have not really had their voice heard. And then a statistically relevant survey would be, for me, on this level of sensitivity over a topic, a digital, you know, self-selected kind of survey isn't going to do it for me. And I think I would believe when we're talking about, do we need another data point? Well, if it's a legit data point, um, I would like to have it. So, um, that would be how I would change it, though.
Can I mention very quickly, ma'am, if, if this idea of a survey was approved by council, actually, one of the things we were going to mention is that we, we know what we don't know on our team. We're not statisticians and we're not survey experts. So we would look for a reputable third party who could come in and, and craft questions that are not leading toward a certain outcome, but really do a great statistically valid, you know, professional survey. I'm not sure I'm hearing that that's what the council wants, but that was definitely in our mind. And, and if the council wants us to look at a, a lower key option for engaging people out in the community, maybe some type of workshop that you're talking about, we could also look at that as well, if, if that's what you guys want.
Um, okay. And then I had mentioned that if we do have that survey, it could be, um, or a community workshop, or, you know, work session could be timed while that survey is out. And for any survey, I think it would be important, you know, whether it's the community survey or a water survey, is to evaluate how we're doing with reaching people. Obviously, statistically relevant survey and a representative survey is what our goal should be. And if we find that we're not getting the responses we need to really have a full picture that we would not just say, okay, we did it for four, it was open for four weeks and, you know, it is what it is, but maybe put some effort into evaluating like three weeks in and just saying, okay, do we need to maybe go to some apartment complexes or go to this church? Or, you know, like just to capture, you know, the types of responses we're hoping to get. Oh. And then finally, I'm sorry, you guys, this is what I do all day, is outreach. I read through this in detail. Regarding the topical open houses that you mentioned, okay, in the agenda memo, not in the presentation, but they're not listed yet in the lineup, so I was kind of curious to know, um, when those might be incorporated or if they would be incorporated in the first six months.
So, yes, um, we definitely could incorporate one or several of those topical open houses. What I'm hearing from council, though, is maybe focus on the listening tours first, and then, and then maybe transition into some more thematic open houses. So we have, we have a list of subjects that we're, you know, prepared to talk about with the community. Of course, we'll gain more information as well from the community. But, um, yeah, we could program, we didn't want to program overprogram and put too much on the calendar, also that was part of it as well.
I get it.
So we wanted to focus more on listening tours starting out.
Well, I guess this last one is actually for my colleagues. I'm on the council, too, you know, I was also elected like all of you regard, and I represent a certain amount of people who want to dive into the water a little bit more than, than just doing the fix that we did, um, the other, you know, the other day. And so- And so, I'm hoping that we can craft a process that, and not just say, oh, we're done, but that we are, there are others in the community that want to be brought along. And I think everybody wants to be brought along and be a part of the solution, just like we do. And so, I'm hoping that whatever we decide to do around, whether it's a survey or more in-depth, inclusive community group to just engage with us, I'm hoping that you would be open to some aspect of that. Because I'd like to be, like I said. But I'm a constituent as well as a representative. That is, that's all of my comments.
Counselor Yuzadi?
Thank you, Mayor. So, first, I'd just like to start with the laugh about that survey question when they came up. I just remember that, but I think everyone in council, I think it was number five. I actually, I remember the number and I remember the first time I read that. I knew automatically, oh, that's going to be trouble. And then we heard the response from the city. So, we definitely want to not do that again, but I know that. So, I like to start off by just saying, the plan that you have right here is spot on, is fantastic. I love it. You listened to all of us who gave you input. You listened to the community. You saw it's responsive, it's holistic. So, I've worked in many different functions and industries, right? Sales, marketing, finance, planning. Now, I build products in the technology world. And just from reading through this strategy plan, and I was really nervous when I read this because I communicated...
Me, too.
So, when I communicated when we met, and I'm sure folks on council have heard me many times say this, but I always hesitate when it comes to government and communication, right? Outreach is number one, is always my priority. Community engagement is key, especially when we have low trust. So, when I read this, I was already, you know, I came into it with this biased lens of, okay, oh, gosh, just please be good. And I was very satisfied, I was very good. So, bravo on that. A few things.
Thank you.
The lack of trust piece, though true, so the ethnicity thing is true, but in this city, I would say it's universal. It's agnostic to ethnicity here. But everything you said in the prologue, of, you know, when you went through your prologue of how you, was great and true and is spot on. So, I think where we are as a city, state, and country, so, great job there. A few things missing, I would say, would be, so one is a question, one is a comment. The question is related to promotion. How are you planning on promoting this? There's a difference between increasing access and having, you know, the tours, right, and the coffee chats and all of that. But a big gap is always how it gets promoted, how people get to know that it's actually going to be there. So, what's the promotion plan? Before I move on to my points.
Okay. Okay. Well, thank you on this one. Great question, sir. One of the advantages of being able to stream on different platforms is that it will make it a lot easier for us to promote activities, especially virtual activities that we'll be broadcasting. So, that's a key plus, actually, that I had in my notes that I didn't mention. So, thank you for raising that. From my part also, I know that, and I fall back a little bit on my previous experience in government when I mentioned this, working through stakeholders and working through our partners and leaning more on them to be, to help promote some of our activities, I think is also very important. Also, for some of the reasons Counselor Nermal mentioned, you know, trying to bring those people to the table. And so, those are two ideas I have. One of the benefits of the restructure that our team went through over the course of the pandemic, but particularly in the last few months, now that we have a centralized and robust team, is we have a really great skill set in-house that understands some of the options of both physical, print, and digital marketing and the ability to target. So, for example, the team that does cultural affairs, I think in recent years has done a really good job of getting the word out, whether that's through buses and bus stop signage for the Brew Fest to targeted digital advertising online to get that awareness out. So, we have that skill set now, coupled with Mr. Redmer doing the engagement to provide some of that capability and expertise to help us use our entire communication engine, not only for talking about what the community is doing, we're promoting special events, but also this plan.
Okay. So, there is in-house, there's a, there are more in-house experts in physical, digital apps?
Correct.
Okay. So, one thing I think is missing is related to promotion of businesses, local businesses. I didn't hear it or see it in here. I know that there are coffee chats where we might include some of those businesses, but one thing I heard on the campaign trail was from a lot of folks where, was about how the city could do a better job, not just businesses, but also local events, you know, that's not sponsored by the city. I think there are some that are staples of Westminster that aren't sponsored by Westminster that we could be doing much more promotion of. So, what are your thoughts about that realm?
I appreciate you bringing that up, and I know that was a topic in some of our conversations recently as well. You didn't see that in this plan because this is really focused on the community and council engagement aspect. The other piece of our team, the communication team, is working on several different new platforms and methods to tell positive stories about the community. And a component of that would be getting out into, in working with economic development as well, who is doing this type of work. And now that that restructure, I think, has also really synergized that. So, we will be doing that more on the communication side of things versus the engagement side, which is what Mr. Redmer is presenting this evening.
Okay. So, there is a plan forthcoming?
Yes.
And related to the survey, I would be interested in this question that speaks to how people would want to be engaged with. I don't know if that's, is that a current question right now? Do you prefer email, phone, et cetera?
There is a question, and I don't know the exact wording, that asks how people get information, I believe. And I'm not certain if we ask a preference, but we can certainly look at that as we are working on that next community survey.
Yeah, because I think if it's worded in a preference style versus whatever style it is today, it might help to align the strategy, right, to the preference of the majority. I love Counselor Nermal's point about how do we bring in more? I call them silenced, but that implies a negative connotation to the word. Just folks who aren't able to get their voices heard or don't know how to, right? They have thoughts and feelings, too, about how the city should be run, that we need to hear. They may not be able to come to these recreational facilities that we, like for the listening tour, where we'll use the cities. So, have you discussed other alternatives of, or additional options in terms of where we have these tours or coffee chats to be more inclusive of people's schedules, time, et cetera, knowing that we have a lot of low and fixed income folks?
Yeah, that's a great question, sir. And one of the key advantages of getting some of these events off sites is to have more flexibility in terms of the timing, different times of day, different ambiances. Not everybody's comfortable coming to a meeting like this and talking also. And so, we really are striving for some of those informal discussions. To answer your question honestly, we haven't gotten that far yet. We have a list of stakeholders that we are planning to reach out to. That's partly a function of the fact that we put this together quickly and we wanted to have it for you in the new year, and partly a function that we wanted to see that you were proving us in the planning concept. So, we have a list of stakeholders, everyone from Rotary to Growing Home, and we'll be planning to reach out to them in earnest in the coming weeks to develop those relationships and try to set some things up.
Okay. And I do love the concept of the coffee chats, too, and the list of orgs that you put as examples there. I'm a member of Rotary and Growing Home and some of these, and I think I've heard from lots of different groups and organizations that they would like to have opportunities as an organization to speak with council, right? Because they have constituents themselves that talk to them, and they could kind of consolidate that and relay that to us. That's a good piece there. Mayor Protam had a great point about education. You know, a big, one of the biggest points about communication is, how do you educate, right? Not just inform, because there's a difference, right? Education, I think, could be beefed up in this plan, meaning not just telling folks what's happening at, you know, during, generally from us to them, but maybe having like more educational sessions, like, hey, do you want to learn about water? You know, or do you want to learn about how XYZ works? You know, what's in your charter? How does city code, what this code means? Having, bringing experts in, talking to them, and we could be guests, but having an expert walk them through a teacher background, right? But, you know, that could teach them and really engage with them, and they can ask questions, that they can learn something new that they didn't know before. That adds a lot of value and that builds trust. One thing I think you implied with the prologue is the trust, right? That this will help trust. I think that should be probably stated in the strategy. I don't know how, or I'm sure you can figure out how you can do that, but I think a stated goal, you know, the assumption here is that we are trying to build trust by doing all these things, right? So, we should state it. And I think when people see it stated, assuming they read it, right? But the ones who do, and we can communicate that, too, and say, hey, here's the new strategy. Here's the stated goal. People will at least have comfort that we get it, that we are listening to them, that we're not, you know, blind and deaf to what they're saying, which is that we want to trust. We want to trust the government. So, having a stated goal might be helpful there.
Sure.
And then finally, on the effectiveness of the boards, that's a great point. I think, so this was my first round interviewing. My first, before that, was as an interviewee, when I was interviewee for the Election Commission a couple of years ago. There were a lot more applicants, it seemed, when I was interviewee than what we saw a few weeks ago. Usually, so my hypothesis, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, is that when something goes down in, when a product or initiative or whatever goes down in utility, it's because of the product itself. It's not linked to external circumstances. So, like, there might be an opportunity to look at our boards and commissions and take a really deep analysis and say, do we still need XYZ, right? Does this one actually provide value? It could be that people have, you know, they were really excited, they got on the boards and they have, and they came out of it with a, well, it's not effective enough, it doesn't have enough teeth, you know? They don't see value in it. So, maybe there's an opportunity to build those up and give them more teeth and more value, then that might spread, you know, from a communication standpoint, that spreads. People will hear about it and say, oh, look, this board is now functioning this way. Oh, that's really exciting. Maybe I'll interview because I want to, you know, have more say. That's just a thought. But overall, great job.
Thank you very much, sir.
Counselor Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, listening to my colleagues, I again appreciate the discussion. I hope that we come to, I hope staff feels empowered enough at the end of this to have some kind of clarity as far as direction, because I know that there is lots being said here. But much to what Counselor Seymour had mentioned, as far as Channel 8, closed captioning, those are all things that I've championed my time on council, so I'm glad to see that those are still kind of a highlight in this plan. I'd also like to kind of see the snail mail newsletter that we used to send to residents as an option. It's a newsletter, essentially, newspaper, excuse me, option for quick reading for our residents. And then maybe even electronic newsletter. That used to be the case. I believe that ended, I want to say, last February. But all of those have been pertinent areas of specialized communication that we've been able to do with our residents. And then also offering newsletter items to HOAs. I think that's important as well, for them to just be able to forward the information. That way, they don't have to create content, it's just a forward and/or a link that they can have in their, in their line of communication to their residents. And I think, as we had mentioned, I live in a townhouse, so I don't get, townhomes and apartment complexes don't get the water information that's inserted into water bills. And so, that is also, I think, a missing middle, a missing piece of content that we can hopefully, in the future, kind of bridge that gap as far as having the same information provided to most, if not all, residents, especially if they're paying water, Westminster water in one way or another. So, some of my questions, and not necessarily needing answered now, but just kind of, as we're going through these questions, as we're going through the presentation, is where are we at now? What are our metrics now? What's the snapshot now? Because, and I know that that takes some research, and that's what we're doing between January and June to create that. But I think we do have enough information from community surveys to kind of have an understanding about how many residents have responded in those surveys, what's the rate of return on them. I think that that is a good starting point to then baseline where we need to go. And then, how much weight are we putting, how much weight of time are we putting on each category of listening, informing, and involving? Are all of them 30% worth of time? Is one 50%, meaning is the listening 50%, and the rest equated to 100%? So, I would want to understand the level of time on those categories. And then, what's the expectation of involvement? So, when I was going, when you're going through your presentation and you were going through defining what's listening, what's informing, and what's involving, I'm thinking to myself, this doesn't build trust for me, right? Just even as a resident, it doesn't build trust. So, listening, what, so for me, in a definition of listening is, what does the community want and the direction they want to see, right? So, understanding that baseline as far as what does the community want. And then informing is making sure that we are able to come back to the community and say, we heard you on all of these levels, right? Acknowledging that we heard XYZ, but this is what we can do in the parameters of our scope of financial constraints, XYZ. And so, that then lends to, okay, we heard you, but this is what we can do and what we can focus on in our scope of work. And then the level of involvement means that, from a community perspective, what do they have a say in on making that change? So, we list it out, what we can do in that informing stage, right? So, we can do ABC. Okay, so, in ABC, what does the community then have involvement on? Do they get to be part of our boards and commissions? Do they get to be part of a level of say in what they change in ABC, if that makes sense? So, I think that then brings together a circle of trust that we are setting a level of expectation for our community on what we've heard, what we can work on, and what they can be involved in. And so, that way, we are accountable in all aspects. And so, when it comes to the level of engagement, I'd like to see, I think what was missing in here is an overall goal, overall objective, overall tactics. What is our goal? I know as all of us have done in the past is run a campaign. What's your goal? Your goal is not to focus on 100% of the community. That is unattainable. Although, we will... Although we will wish to and want to, we, we want to focus on what's the goal, right? So focusing on how many residents that we need to talk to. We know that 20% of our residents are engaged with the community, are engaged in voting. So is our goal focusing on shooting for 20% of our population, 30% of our population? And if we don't make 30%, how can we increase it from there post-June 2022? And so if we have a baseline as far as a goal, then in June of 2022, we can understand that we didn't make a marker of 20% outreach to our community. Well, how are we going to pivot to that to make sure that we're increasing that as time goes on? So having that goal, having the objective of the underlying goal as far as communication, is that the main objective? Or is, is trust? That is what I'd like to see is just the goals and objectives. And then the tactics, you kind of outlined your tactics in here as far as how you're going to accomplish some of those things. And I understand that this is kind of an overarching premise. But I think somebody else, one of my colleagues had mentioned this to level of engagement and marketing to this. But it was mentioned that there would be a third party. My overall question to this, a third party to developing survey questions. So my overall, and before that even came up, was, what is the cost to accomplish all of this? Because there's some kind of marketing objective cost, whether that's in-house or going to a third party. Is that coming back to council as far as how much this would cost to, to get this outreach accomplished? And then to the translation services, while I can appreciate having that level of access, we also need to be mindful of whether or not it's warranted and needed. I would hate to waste someone's time if that level of language, whether that is communication language or whether that is sign language. I think that we need to be mindful and not necessarily have it at all events, because I think there's a rhyme and reason to asking for, do you need that access? Because it is a financial impact to the city for including those services. Not unless we have them in-house, although that is an in-house cost. But it's, it's warranting that level of what's, what's warranted for our community. So and asking, again, what do you, what do you need from our community? So I think there's lots more legs that need to happen on this. And, and maybe I'm just a little bit more critical because this is my career and line of work that I do every day. So I think that there's, again, a lot more that I'd like to see in this. I think it's a start, but it's not quite there for me yet.
Thank you. Counselor Baker?
Thank you, Mayor. Got some questions to go. Some are some basic. How many are in your department? How many people?
So specific to community engagement, it's a, it's a workforce of, of one in terms of kits work. Comprehensive within, within our division, we have three facets. We have cultural affairs. And I believe you'll be receiving org charts from Mr. Andrews in, in the coming days. So rather than me give you exact numbers, right now, we have a cultural affairs team that was assimilated from Parks and Recreation during, during the pandemic. And then we have community engagement, which is one person plus our AV support. And then we have our communications team, which is the recent centralization of our citywide communication, which was siloed by department within our division. And, and we can, we can provide that org chart and you can see the exact breakdown of how that looks.
Thank you. And why did we get rid of the newspaper?
There were a few factors with the newspaper. And I'm glad you brought that up because I also want to address, I believe Counselor Smith brought that up as well. We are taking some strides to increase our mail publications. The newspaper was beneficial in that it goes to every house and, and we want to continue to do more of that. The methodology with the paper, and it went away at the, partway through the pandemic. It was a very kind of reactionary and, and labor intensive process. So what we found, when people get a newspaper, they expect it to be yesterday's news. Our newspaper tended to be a month ago's news because of the process of you create and lay out a paper. It was really a one to two month process. We'd get one done and then we'd do the other, the next. So it wasn't timely in terms of the content in it. And it also was not as thoughtful, I think, as we would like from a communication perspective. It was, because of the way we were structured at the time, very siloed. Each department would provide their stories and we'd plug them in and it would go. So what we're doing now is we're moving to four publications a year instead of just two. It'll go to every household in addition to the activity guides. That's a total of seven publications that our team will send out. We did six newspapers plus the activity guides. So those seven, we will be hopefully providing more strategic and interesting information, not only in the four new publications, but within our activity guide as well.
And I cannot emphasize enough how terrible that survey question was as whether you want to pay a lot for water or whether you want to drink dirty water. That was absolutely outrageous. What are we trying to fix? You know, step back, go up to 50,000 feet. What are we trying to fix? What are trying, where is our failure in our really communication as a city?
If I may, are you asking about communicate? And I don't want to be too, too much of a stickler on the definitions here, but are you talking about communication or?
Let me really focus it down for you. Where is our failure that these proposed meetings and surveys and boards are supposed to fix? What is the failure there? How did you measure a failure there?
What we heard from our conversations with council over the last few months, I think one was, was trust. And, and I think we've heard a lot of agreement around that. And that's something that we measure as a city through that survey every other, every other year. And we've seen a decline in that here in Westminster. So I think one thing is how can we use this engagement strategy to reverse that trend of trust in our, in our local government in, in our city? So that would be one. Another one that we heard was representation. There's a sense at least that we hear a lot from the same people and there are significant populations within our community that we don't hear from as much. So how can we increase representation? I think would be another one of those. And, and this is where we really want to get your input in terms of goals with this plan. Another one that I heard tonight, and this plan really, to Counselor Smith's point, kind of stopped at that involved stage. And I think we heard from Counselor Seymour and many others, when we talk about that collaboration aspect with our existing boards, I think that's a miss for us that we can build in as a goal. How do we increase the number of people that want to be civically engaged by serving on a board? And that next step of community empowerment within that spectrum? How do we get more people that are not only engaged, but are also getting out and voting? And there's a lot of factors that influence voter turnout. So I think that's a little bit harder to track. But how can we move those needles? So those are things that I've heard, that I would see as goals. And I think we can, to Counselor Smith's point, do a better job of spelling those out across that whole spectrum. But we want to hear from you, are those the right goals?
So you've heard it from all the seven of us. You've heard that there's a failure that could be, that you think that's why you propose these strategies.
Correct.
That would?
We, we had meetings, we'd offered meetings with the council over the last two months and received feedback in addition to comments that we've heard, not only from the community, but from you all, and tried to filter that all in to this plan.
Right, okay. See, because I find it interesting when it comes to trust on the, on the chart that Mr. Redmer proposed, I found it more correlated with how much the media really supported the government more than any other factor. Well, the correlation was there with the media. If you go back to 2001, oh yeah, trust in government went way up. If you went back to the 2012 election, there was another peak in trust in government there. And that's again, because the press was very favorable to it. Not a cause and effect, mind you, but a correlation. And as far as voter turnout, we've had the best voter turnout in the last three elections, more than any other time in our history. You know, voter turnouts of 27,000, 30,000 and 27,000. If we're using that as a measure, are we doing great? See, because I don't see what the failure is in our really communicating with our people. And I wouldn't want to go to these extensive things if there wasn't some true gain for what we're going to do. Because we're talking a lot of work and effort on the part of our staff. And if it's minimal results, now there are some things we can do that don't take a lot of them. You know, to have a town hall doesn't take them. As us show up, but I think everyone on this council is more than willing to do that.
Okay. It is, it is, it is a workload, no doubt. And if it's the direction of council to reduce the scope of this plan, that's something that we can take into consideration and, and execute based on your direction. I think we have heard from you all and I wanted to make sure we heard from everyone, just to make sure we have clear direction on a few of these items, such as the board. That's an example of something we can take off of this menu if that's the direction of council. And so we're here tonight for that very reason. We've certainly heard different perspectives. And so we, we want to get some consensus from council. If we're on the right track, do you want to reduce the, the scope? And in particular, to Counselor Smith's point, I think there's some additional work we can do in this plan to spell out some of those goals and metrics for success.
How do you measure success? I mean, for of the Counselor Smith, it's wonderful. Because that's sales. And hey, if you have more sales, your tot's in success. For us, it's a little more murky. So how do you propose that we measure success?
Thank you.
Which is why, of course, we needed to find what the problem is.
Right. Well, I, yeah, I appreciate your questions, Counselor Baker, because they were actually the ones I was hoping to wrap up with you all. When it comes to measuring success, I think what we've heard, and one thing that we can measure, but I want to make sure these are the right things. When we talk about trust, that's an existing baseline measure that we've had for a decade, two decades. So that's something that we have the ability to measure. That can be a goal. When it comes to, I've heard the demographic representation within our engagement efforts, that can be a goal. And that's something that we're looking at as a goal, if that's a desire of council. What I heard tonight is with our boards and commissions, we've seen a decline in people's willingness to participate in those. So I, I would propose that we add that as a goal. How do we use these efforts and other efforts like our, our Civic Academy as a pipeline to get people interested in taking that next step of involvement in government? I would propose that that would be a goal. And to your point on, on the voting, I think that's a difficult goal because there are so many factors that influence turnout. But if there's some goal related to that that we can come up with in terms of overall community involvement, open to that. So I think those are the four things that I've heard. But we want to get that validation tonight so that we have clear direction on how, not only the tactics, but how we're measuring success.
Can I ask if you're in favor of the different boards that they're proposing?
Absolutely not. As a matter of fact, I'm not in favor of any of this program. I think it's a lot of effort and a lot of our work on one, an ill-defined problem. And a problem that, how are we going to measure success on? I would be much more up to having a completely stripped down version of this and having a couple town hall, telephone town halls, if you want to do that. My only problem with the telephone town halls was, I thought there was a great deal of the feeling of unfairness. When you have an in-person town hall and you have a line of people at a microphone, the fairness is up. When you have people put on hold in a virtual town hall, I think there's real reason for people to think that they would jump in. So part of me would really prefer real town halls in different parts of the city. And not just listening, but that the counselors have to somehow respond to the question. But otherwise, I would go with a very stripped down.
Mayor, could I ask a question?
Sure.
Counselor Baker, I'd like to understand, do I, do I understand you saying that you don't feel like there is a miss in our communications with the city of Westminster? That's my one question. And two, how do you define success when it comes to creating a plan like this?
Fair questions. Is there a miss in our really communications? I don't know. That's why I asked, what's the failure in our communication? What is the problem we're trying to fix? That's why I asked. There is not an obvious failure in Westminster's really communications as compared to most other levels of government that I'm aware of. And how do we judge success? Well, if we can't define the problem, judging success is nearly impossible.
Great, thank you so much.
Start round two. I haven't said anything, so I'm going to jump in. We don't have our strategic planning until January 29th. So it's hard to go out and tell anybody what our plan's going to be until that's over. So that's my first thought when I was reading everything. I nearly had a heart attack over three different, or coupled the same, but all the surveys that would be happening, two in February, one in March. From the last administration, people are survey out. And it would have, I, I just caution us to be tactical about what we survey, be intentional. It can't be long. If it's information we need about a topic or whatever, get it. But there's a certain point, and, and they were so horrible. I got so angry trying to answer them. And you heard councils say, past councils say, oh, well, we opened it up because we weren't getting very many people. So it becomes unstatistical. And well, it was, this part was statistical, but if you did it this way, we didn't even look at them. Let's not waste people's time. Let's not waste people's time. And let's not only give answers that staff or somebody wants an answer to. Because I got so angry at one of the surveys because I didn't, I didn't like A or B. And it wouldn't let me go on in the survey. They were horrible. I can't tell you how horrible they were. So trust, trust is going to be in what we're asking. And I hope and pray we get to see it before it goes out because those would have never gone out if somebody had common sense had seen them.
And I can assure you, the community survey that's listed there in February, that's the one that we do every other year. That is done by a, a third party independent firm. That, that is what they do. And so when it comes to the question structure and the statistical validity, they, they do that entirely. And as you heard, our desire And as you heard, our desire would be, or other surveys in particular, if they're going to be information for council decision-making or just general knowledge, we would want to have a similar approach. You know, there is, as someone alluded to, there is a cost to that, so we would absolutely need to be strategic about that. I think there's a time and place for the smaller-scale surveys, but that's more of a, how did you like your swim lesson class on a scale of one to five, not larger policy-related questions.
The listening tours, I'm all for. It's time to at least set that base and let people know we're not afraid to go out and talk to them. To listen, they have great ideas. It isn't just about listening, it's about asking. They have solutions. We need to be hearing them. And so you get everything at those. And we do answer questions. So I just think it's a great interaction, and I miss it, and I can't wait till we do it. Roundtables, I really want to hear from businesses what they need, how they're doing, what else can we do? And then I think we have a whole group of nonprofits. There's a huge group of nonprofits in this city that we can listen to. We have three school districts. We've got a huge pastors' group. We've got lots of different civic organizations, so you could have roundtable chats all day long. But anyway, I think in May especially, it's a busy month, folks. We have graduations and parties, you have armed services ceremony, and you have the cleanup day. Those are three Saturdays, and then all of the different days of the week that people are having graduations, people don't have time for us in May.
That's good input, thank you.
They do not. They just do not have time for us in May. And you'll hear that from people. The three boards that are listed here, we need to focus on our boards that we have. And I do believe after our strategic plan, and we have a plan, and we have our goals, because they are under us, and they are supposed to, whether it's environmental, whether it's inclusivity, whether it's parks and rec, they are supposed to work under what our goals are, and then how they take those goals and work them within their areas. I don't know the last time that they were brought together and talked to, twice, years ago. So it's time to just have them all together, you present, ask them, they're the ones involved in those committees, what could be changed, how we look at things, whatever. But that's a great communication piece with our boards and commissions. And we got rid of transportation, because we didn't need it anymore. We merged parks, rec, and library together. So it's always good to reassess, do we need new ones? Do we need old ones gone? I think that's always fair. But I do not believe, oops, did I lose myself? The utility board, water steering committee, and citizens advisory, maybe down the road, but we would have to know exactly what they are, what they would be doing, what their task would be. And there's no way in God's green earth right now, I could tell you that. And I, we have enough things going on with the current situations and some things that need to be cleaned up. I can't even imagine bringing on three other committees of any sort. So those are my thoughts.
Well, I really appreciate the input we received from all of you and--
We still have people in the queue.
Oh, my apologies.
I just stepped in and took my turn. Councilor, Mayor Pro Tem Demont.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you to my colleagues and Ryan and your team for the conversation. I think I wanted to address something that you brought up. And so I agree 100%, you know, that the conversation has to be with everybody. And I agree 100% that everybody at this dais has to be part of it. Part of what I've seen in my time, where really we've spitered into this problem we have with water, came out of a scenario where I wasn't being-- And I was trying to raise a flag, saying, I think this is going to hurt people. I think this is going to cause frustration. And frankly, I got called the troublemaker by my colleagues, so you'll never hear me saying that you don't have that right and responsibility to be part of the conversation. And I think that when you're starting to talk about, and I think that the mayor just really alluded to my thoughts very well about, it's not that I don't think that having the citizens be part of the process long-term isn't a good idea, because I think it is, because they're the ones who are going to be affected when we raise water rates. And they're the ones who have to be educated about infrastructure, and why we're making changes, and why we're spending money in a way that, you know, it gets out to the community, because those folks are going to look at it differently than we are going to look at it. But right now, we do have to make some decisions. And I have to say, and I don't, I hope this doesn't come across wrong, but I do take exception to the idea that anybody at this dais wants to stop it at the solution that we came up with. That is, in my mind, is a simple stopgap. And that's what I was trying to allude to when the inclusivity board wanted to talk about that. I'm like, please go listen to the meeting, because everybody at the dais all said the same thing. We all want to look at what more can we do? That solution just was one that staff came back and said, we can do this, it's not going to hurt our bond rating, it's not going to hurt our loan obligations, we can make this, which, in my view, from, you know, and everybody has their different, they've talked to people across the city and heard different things, but it certainly is going to be the people who are believing the most. Those are the people that have the biggest burning fire as far as how the water rates have hit them. I wish that we could move faster than the other things, but I only bring it up because I want you to know, at least from my perspective, I'm very much dedicated, and I think I've heard the rest of my colleagues dedicated to figuring that out. And I think that that's, the work that we have to do is so deep and wide, that bringing on an additional board right now to try to get them in the mix, I think is just going to slow us up. We need to right the ship, in my mind, and some of that is deciding, do we need a new water plant? What does that look like? Where's it going to go? Validating those decisions that we have before we can make a system where we don't get into this situation in the future. And that's what I would hope that we would see. So I would say, let's table that, not kill it. And then I like your, I think, one way that we could accommodate, and just, this is one of those things that, being in council for a while, I've had the pleasure of being, going through, even with the water rates we did, we did do workshops. I think that they do need to be a little more flexible on people's input being taken, so that it's just not, do you like black or hate black, or, you know, or is that it? You know, there's, there needs to be more flexibility in the answers that we're taking back, because it's usually not a yes-no question that people are dealing with. But I do think that those water workshops really give us that, you know, are we on the right track as far as the residents? Do they under, or do they even understand what we're doing and why we're doing it? So I think that as we go through this path, workshops are going to be vital, so that we can make sure that we're educating the public, because that's a big piece of it. And the last thing I wanted to bring up, and this is a, if you could, City Manager Andrews, could you get the council the most recent survey? Because some of the things that I think Councilor Azadi was asking, I think it would be beneficial for him to see how those questions were asked. And it, you know, when you were talking about the question as far as how people are communicated with, I think it was asked, how do you prefer, or how are you most engaging? It alluded to the same thing that you're looking for, and I think that the reason it stuck out to me when you guys were talking about it, was that was one that, probably one of the top five that stuck out to me, because I thought it was interesting as far as where people were engaging with the city. And I think that the, you know, I think we left that as, oh, well, people really aren't looking at Facebook or social media as much as we think. And maybe that's the case, or maybe we're just not doing as good of a job on those platforms. But I do think that, you know, looking at that survey might be very helpful if you haven't looked at it before. So if you could put that at the top of our email, it would be helpful, so we don't have to go search for it.
Councilor Azadi?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, PT. I think that makes sense, if it is worded that way. I think one of the loopholes there would be the representative sample, right? So if the survey was, I don't know what the numbers were, if you know, Jody, but if it's 100 people, and X percentage said, we prefer email or whatever, to me, in a city of 119,000, we need to have higher standards for sampling. And to your point, maybe it is a third party that will come in and figure out how to get it bigger. You know, maybe they have options there. But I know that the past surveys, I don't have the numbers offhand, but I know that they were small, and they shouldn't be taken as word, right, because of that. Now, of course, we don't need thousands to get a representative survey, a sample, but it's more than what we've gotten. So how do we get more participation in these surveys? But I love Mayor's point about, we don't want too many surveys, you know, either. It needs to be intentional and targeted and infrequent, right? When people get a survey, it's supposed to be, oh, they're asking us, this must be special, not, oh, that, here's another one, you know, week after week, oh, here's another one. So it's a great point that reduce the frequency, make them more targeted, and bring in experts to make sure it's worded. I don't know if we want to have final looks, you know, a looksee before it's published, but I'm not sure if that's reaching in too far down in terms of our responsibilities in the cities. But definitely because of the past, this past, this one, but I'm sure there have been many with questionable wording, we should probably get a look at what the final questions are before it's published, just to make sure that we feel comfortable it's fair. And then maybe future ones, we all need to see them, or something like that.
Taking all of that to heart, and the only thing I wanted to clarify, I think the survey that's being referenced, where there was a question that has been brought into question, that is, I just want to separate that from the community survey that is done by a third-party statistically valid. So their point well-taken on that other survey, but I just want to reiterate that that survey process is handled by an outside party that makes sure that it's statistically valid within a particular confidence interval. And note taken on those other surveys that are done kind of off the side of that main survey that's done every other year.
Okay, just one more question and then a comment. When you showed me that draft of the communication plan, you had something about a magazine.
Yes.
Is that no longer in the plan?
Oh, it absolutely is. And so let me, let me just take a moment to specify the conversations we had. We talked both about communication and the community engagement. And yes, they're very much interrelated. Those are two different functions within our team. So we're here tonight talking about what's been our traditional community engagement plan, and how do we enhance that and make sure that that's meeting your needs? We could, we could spend a lot of time talking about, on the communication side, a lot of the improvements that we are in the process of making. That does include the email newsletters coming back. That does include the magazine that we've been doing, increasing the frequency of that and mailing that to every home. That also includes enhancements within our activity guide, so that we're doing a lot more from a mail standpoint. And those are all communication platforms, and we're also working on the content going into those to address some of the things you brought up about highlighting community stories, highlighting businesses, highlighting the positive things that are going on within the community. We could, our intent tonight wasn't to go through those things, and we'd certainly be happy to spend more time at council's request in the future to talk about the communication side of things.
Okay, thank you. And just one last point about the goals. I think you laid them out well, where you mentioned that the goal here is trust, it's community empowerment, civic engagement, and representation, right? Those make sense to me. And then, Councilor Baker, I have a similar question to Lindsay, that's sorry, to Councilor Smith, related to like what you would like to see there in terms of goals. But my question to you is really, do you, are you saying that you don't believe these are issues, those five things in the city of Westminster? And I'm trying not to have a leading question here, but from what I've heard from a lot of people, it's a, those are all very big issues. So I'm confused as to how you don't see them as issues. Can you please clarify for me?
How, okay, start at the first one, trust. Where do you think the failure in trust occurred?
Are you asking me?
Yeah. This is the conversation.
You're answering the question with a question, okay.
Well, that's what politicians do.
I don't know where it occurred in the city. It could have been many, many, many administrations ago. And then with culture, culture sticks, right? And evolves and grows. So I'm not sure where it happened, but I do know that there are causes, many of them including communication, that's usually the case. You know, it's hard to go back in history and say, well, why do people not trust government? Well, not trust Westminster government? It could be linked from federal down, right? If people distrust federal, then they'll naturally distrust their local too, just naturally, without cause, right? But--
But that's going to be beyond our ability to control. The only thing we can control is how the people in our city trust us.
Exactly, but in our control then is communication, right? That's in our control to improve how we communicate.
Don't you think that one terrible survey damaged trust? I shouldn't ask the question. I think that the survey that had people that we pretended to say, we really want your opinion, your opinion is valuable, and we ask them a couple stupid questions, and then we ask them a question, which I can't remember the X thing, but I'll paraphrase it, is, would you like to pay a high price for water, or do you want crappy cheap water? And when you ask a question like that, I think even the most inattentive residents of Westminster say, these guys are cheaters.
Yes, and I think that just by you asking that question, because we both agree, right? I think everyone here agrees that survey was ridiculous, and that question was crazy, right? And wrong. But just the fact that we agree that it was wrong proves that communication can impact trust, and that we've had, and that we have had bad communication. So within our control to change that.
That wasn't bad communication, that was dishonest communication. That was a push-pull leading question. And it was so obvious and clear that everyone saw it. And I am appalled that the city did it. I'm appalled that decent people who work in this city allowed it to go out, because you don't have to be a PhD or a specialist, just an ordinary person. And anyone who's in public relation, man, that should have raised alarm bells and red sirens and everything else all along. So I mean, we can undo the past, we can only move forward into the future, completely thing. But if that's where the lack of trust came from, we need to be able to own that. And then in our future communications with our city, with our, of the residents, honesty and full disclosure has got to be at the top of the level, and I don't think we need special programs to do this. We need to do this in all of our programs. In a sense, that's what I disliked about the demonstration garden. Yeah, there's an educational component to that, I won't doubt that. But there's also an indoctrination component to that. There's also a propaganda component to that. And that's, to me, seeds the lack of trust, because I think a lot of other people in the city would see those, that project, the exact same way that I do. That this isn't something to help the city, or find something that's unknown, or anything else, this is something to con the people who live there.
Yeah, so just one final comment from me on this. I hear what you're saying, and I think what you're saying is because of the bad past--
And I think what you're saying is because of the bad past, um, why spend more staff energy into something that might be taken as propaganda, right?
Absolutely right.
But what I'm saying is that assumes that your, your hypothesis is assuming that that was the primary cause of the distrust, that one survey. And I don't think you can honestly say from all the doors that you knocked and the people that are talking to you, that even 5% of them knew of that survey and that was their cause. From the people that I've spoken to, their reasons are vast and wide and, and varied as to why they don't like the government or why they don't trust the government or someone, something that a counselor said, or something that the city did that they didn't like, or conspiracy theories, right? That they have heard is happening, but it's not true. There's a lot of reasons why. It's not because of the majority, 99%, I would say, of folks who have expressed that they don't trust the government is linked to many, many factors, a majority of which can be categorized under communication. Um, and none of them can be pointed to just one survey that they heard of last year. Cause the trust issues have been ongoing for many years before last year's survey. So I think we, we should do everything in our power that's in our control, to your point, to improve that. And one way that we can do that is to just have a better communication tactical plan, right? And that's what we're trying to talk about here.
Thank you, Counselor.
Counselor Numella.
Thank you. Um, first, Councilmember, MPT, loving the acronym. Um, uh, I really appreciate the comments and I, um, thank you for, um, and I, and I appreciate all my colleagues being willing and open to, um, to hearing, um, my input and everyone's input on council. Um, you know, what I'm hearing, um, Councilmember Baker, um, you know, and I want to reframe for you a little bit because I, I feel like, um, you know, you're coming at a point to this outreach program of just deficit. And, you know, I'll, I'll make an example. Maybe it's, you know, not the best one, but, um, you know, you water your, your lawn to keep it green. You don't water it to just keep that one, you know, like you don't wait for a brown spot to, to pop up. You're there, you're, you're, you're watering it before it gets there. Um, and so I think in a representative democracy, we're not just responding only to the brown spots. Uh, we are, we are fully trying to engage with our community, um, and be and act and fulfill the expectations of a representative democracy. And for us, I think having a robust, and you, you mentioned, you know, we should be honest and open in our communication. That's transparency. That's a goal, right? Um, I think what you're searching for is more of the why, why, why do this? And, and that was what, um, Counselor Smith was also, you know, and all of us really, we, we do want to see those goals, right? And from those goals are going to be these, um, measures of success. And, um, those aren't easy. I understand that. Um, but we should hope, you know, we need to have some level of understanding of how do we know we're doing well? Um, but aside from just, uh, you know, why we, um, should be having a robust outreach programs, we want to be able to hear from the community, right? We need input. One, we don't know what we don't know. And that, and doing what we're, you know, what you've proposed, these listening sessions are going to be great. Um, as, as the mayor mentioned, right? She's looking forward to it as we all are. So, um, that's one thing is just going out and hearing from people and getting input. And the other piece of this, for me especially, is as we're making these, um, decisions, particularly really rolling up our sleeves on water, um, I'd like to see and understand how we're going to reach out to the community and get the input we need from the community on that specific issue. Um, this is, right now, we kind of have this generic approach right now in terms of information. And, um, we do have a key issue that I'd like to see a little more, um, formation around. Um, and maybe we can help with providing a timeline for, um, when we're trying to make a decision by, and then you could now, you know, and, and therefore we could have, um, by when do we want to have the input from the community to inform us?
I think we need to, City Manager Andrews, do we have any water issues coming up for our discussion or votes, month of January or February?
Thank you, Mayor, for the question. And we, I do believe we have an item coming up on, uh, the, I don't have the dates, the next one, Counselor, uh, the 24th, I believe it is, 24th of January.
Maybe from there, you know, we could, you know, we can determine, is there something specific that we want to hear from the community to better understand, um, and give you some guidance on, hey, it'd be great to be able to have this focused conversation on XYZ. Um, and then the only other thing is I, um, just wanted to, uh, um, echo what Counselor Smith said regarding just understanding what our baseline is. Um, so we know where we're embarking from and, um, know who we're currently hearing from. And then that will help us, um, set those measures. Um, yeah.
Counselor Seymour, and then I didn't forget you, Ms. Smith. You're coming. Okay. So Counselor Smith.
Uh, I, I don't have any further comments or questions other than, um, what does staff need from us tonight on clarity?
Mayor Pro Tem.
A couple of quick things. Um, I guess part of, um, what I think I hear from Counselor Baker is, and I have from the, the inception of the innovation and communications, had issues with that being too big. Um, and I, I maintain some of those. And that's probably a longer term discussion than tonight. And I think it's getting mixed in a lot with this because at some point it makes sense. Um, because somebody's got to do this work. Um, however, I do, I, I want to point out a couple of things. Being the one who's been sitting here the longest for the last stint anyway, um, I, I've seen where the problems are. And the problems are listening. And so I like that listening is in here. I love that Counselor Numella pointed out it's a representative democracy because you've just listed it as a democracy that makes my skin crawl because democracy is mob rules and that's not what we are. We need to absolutely look at after the, the rights of the individual. And oftentimes, you know, those are the, the people in the, the shadows of society that we need to make sure that we're representing. Um, and that's just a big principle thing for me. But I do love that there's listening in here because I think that from, and it's not all staff, it's also been on the side of the dais, there's been a listening problem for the city of Westminster. Um, and I, you know, I think there's been plenty of it to go around, um, between staff level and, um, the council. And, you know, here's another example. This is, I take pictures on my phone of everything. There's a couple of other ones that pop up. There was a, a, an ad that was, it called a sprinkler math. And if you looked at the sprinkler math, the amount of sprinklers in zones that they had in there, nobody would ever have in their home. There's no way that you would have enough pressure to even have the, the amount that was in there. And I mean, anybody who knows anything about sprinklers, I'm not a math guy, knows like, that's, that's not right. It's ludicrous to have it in there. Or, and this one I wanted to point out because I think it's really relevant for the work that you have to do when we're talking about workshops and getting back. Did, did we actually teach the residents what they need to know in order to say they think we're on the right track? And that doesn't mean that we're going to, you know, switch tracks necessarily. But I think it's important to, to gauge, you know, how something like a price increase is going to hit the residents. Um, and so this is the one from right before COVID. We had the workshop at City Park and I have all the, the, um, different standups that they had in there. And the, the presentation was clear about, you know, what was being proposed. But it was proposed in such a way, and the feedback was gained in such a way that there still wasn't room to say, um, much more than it has your contact information on this comment form, uh, name, address, city, state, zip, phone, email. Was the information presented, um, easy to understand? Please circle your answer, yes or no. And then the second question, second half of the page was, please provide feedback about the draft 2021 through 2022 water sewer weight proposal below. Um, and I remember I, I took one of those with me because I, it frankly infuriated me because I'm like, what are people supposed to do with this? It's basically like, here's what we're going to do. You happy about it? Or it was more, did you understand it? And here's a place where you can write a paragraph that it's going to be too much for council to assume because it's done in such a way that the 100 people there, I mean, you guys know how it is when we get our packets. It's, you know, it would have been impossible for us to read. We can spot through them. I mean, um, but that's really where Counselor Baker, the brokenness is in my mind, from my time, is we haven't done a good job of listening in a way where we have those data points that we can actually make meaningful impact. Much to the question that you're asking, we were doing it in a way where we were leading to, you know, we weren't giving an option for a different road. We were just saying, this is, is what it is. Deal with it. And did you understand? I mean, and that's not a way to have a conversation. I think that that's really where people from, you know, my time, and, uh, I'm sure that Counselor Smith and Seymour heard this and two years after I was on, where people were like, you're just, you're not really listening to us. You're just telling us what you're going to do and making it sound like we're part of the conversation. And so that, that's the task and that's the brokenness in my mind.
No more comments. No one else has signed up. You've been good.
Thank you again, uh, Mayor. I don't know, I believe, um, I believe I, we have clear guidance on, on most of these. I don't know if there's anything in particular you feel a need to, um, to pull. It sounds as if when it comes to listening, the plan has largely hit the mark, uh, with some input regarding our, uh, approach with surveys moving forward. And, um, on the informing, I heard a, a lot of, a lot of positivity around, um, the approach with the, the coffee chats, the Channel 8 work, expanding, um, our reach across multiple platforms and even the blogs. I think when it comes to that involve section is where we'll go back to, to the drawing board. I, I believe we have direction on tabling the, um, any type of additional boards at this time. And I just want to confirm that. Um, and then we also had the utility open houses. And I didn't hear a, a lot of dialogue on that. So I just wanted, before we conclude tonight.
My only question with that was you had Semper, I think twice. And I'm thinking, was that a miss? Because why wouldn't you take people to Northwest? That one is built for, for expansion. They need to know that. Most people don't.
We can look at that. That would, that would provide two very different perspectives.
Yep. It's all in what you want to present.
Well, thank you again, Kit. Is there anything further that, that you need from council? I, I think this has been really beneficial. And the other thing, I, I just want to thank all of you very much for your comments and, and feedback. Um, and Counselor Smith, appreciate all of your recommendations as well. Um, we've, we've written all of them down and, um, we'll definitely work on the goals, clarifying the goals and the need as well for this plan. Um, and, and streamline the strategy for sure. Thank you very much.
Counselor, you had great discussion tonight. It was good, vibrant and very transparent. So thanks. Have a good evening. It is 11:41 and we're adjourned.
Good night, y'all.
Good night, Counselor. Good night, Ms. Decker.
Good night.